Meeting back to order. We will now have an invocation at this time. I invite you all to join with us or engage in a moment of silent reflection. Let's pray. Lord, we come before you in humbleness to ask your blessings on this meeting. We ask that you give us discernment as well as guidance on the decisions we're about to make for our students, teachers, and complete staff of the McDowell County School System. Let our discussions and decisions be the best for our top priority, our children. Help us to be a positive influence and to provide a safe environment for them all. Lead, guide, and direct. Amen. At this time, Mr. Baker, if you would introduce the color guard or Derek either one.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance presented by the McDowell High NJOTC Color Guard. Y'all please stand.
All right. Ace. Peas. Hands. Colors.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hoard. Colors. Ready. Host. The colors. Host. Aye. Ace. Hoard. Hans. Hoard. Hips.
At this time, the first Monday in December of every year, it's required to do reorganization of the board, so at this time I turn the meeting over to Dr. Gritt, our secretary, to do those honors.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ladies and gentlemen of the audience, trying not to bore you here, but this is a procedural thing that we go through, the first Monday of December every single year. So this is the annual board reorganization process. And this is the nomination of the board chairman. As superintendent of McDowell County Schools and secretary to the McDowell County Board of Education, it is my official duty to preside over the reorganizational meeting of the board. The chairman of McDowell County Board of Education is elected at the regular December meeting of the board held on the first Monday of December and serves until December of the following year. At this time, we will begin the nomination and election for the board chairman. There is no second needed, so the nomination itself will stand. If more than one person is nominated for office, voting will be done with a show of hands in the order of the nomination until a majority is reached. Superintendent will note that a quorum tonight is present. Ms. Smith, we have nine board members present. And at this time, the floor will be open for nominations for board chairman.
I'd like to nominate Terry Frank for chair.
Okay. At this time, I have a nomination for Mr. Frank. Mr. Frank, would you accept the nomination?
I will accept.
If no further nominations are received, the floor will be closed. All right. At this time, we'll need to do a vote. All those in favor with a show of hands. It's a unanimous vote. Nine zero. Mr. Frank, Chairman Frank, congratulations. And I'll turn this meeting back to you, sir.
At this time, our next order of business is to nominate a vice chairman. The newly-elected board chair will conduct the nomination and election for the board vice chairman. At this time, we will begin the nomination and election for the board vice chairman. There is no second needed, as stated earlier, so the nomination itself will stand. If more than one person is nominated for office, voting will be done with a show of hands in order of nomination until majority is reached. The board chair, who is me, will state that a quorum is present, and there are. Ms. Smith, there are nine people present. And at this time, I will open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Frank, I'd like to nominate Mr. Abernathy.
Mr. Abernathy has been nominated for vice chair of the board, McDowell County Board of Education. Is there any further nominations? Mr. Abernathy, will you accept the nomination? With no additional nominations, the floor will be closed. And at this time, all those in favor of Mr. Abernathy becoming the vice chair signify by raising your right hand. Which is unanimous. Unanimous. Okay, at this time, the annual board appointees. At the annual reorganization meeting, the board reappoints a secretary to the board and executive assistant to the board. At this time, the board chairman will open the floor for a motion to approve the following appointments. Motion to appoint Dr. Tracy Gritt, superintendent, as a secretary, and Ms. Becky Smith as his executive assistant to the McDowell County Board of Education. All. Do you have a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion on the annual board appointments? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous. To Dr. Gritt, reaffirmation of the North Carolina School Board Association Code of Ethics.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Frank. Before you tonight, ladies and gentlemen of the board, you should have Policy 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members. At this time, I'm to preside over that. As required by the North Carolina General Statute, each board member is required to reaffirm the Code of Ethics for School Board Members and the Board Member Conflict of Interest on an annual basis. You also have a copy of this that will need to be signed and collected at the end of the meeting. The following board policies were included in the electronic board packet and are posted on the MCS website under Board Policies. The board policies are 2120, Code of Ethics for School Board Members as required by General Statute 160-A-86, and General Statute 115-C-4757. Board Policy 2121, Board Member Conflict of Interest as required by General Statute 14-234. A signature page with copies of each policy is located in a file folder at each member seat. Please sign the affirmation as a recorded receipt of the policies, which provides statutory guidance for the board member's service of the board of education. The superintendent, that's me, will request that each board member submits the signature sheet to the board assistant at the end of the board meeting. All right, Mr. Frank.
Item number nine on the agenda is superintendent remarks, and Dr. Gritt this time asking you to go to the podium and give those, if you don't mind.
Yeah, thank you. Quiet bunch out there tonight. Y'all could smile a little bit. We got through the formalities. Congratulations to the board and our reorganization. We're delighted to have Chairman Frank with us again this year, and Mr. Abernathy as our vice chair, and just really appreciate this board. This is something that's ceremonial, but it also is something that I want to talk about, the work that goes into being a board member for just a minute. And part of what I'm going to do in my remarks here shortly is go through some of that. But this board's done a great deal of work over the last year, and their work's not done. We've got quite a bit more to do, but I'm delighted to have this board and proud of the work that they do for the betterment of our students in McDowell County schools. So I am going to bore you with something that I've written tonight, but I just kind of want to jump into it. Tonight, I want to open our meeting with a few quotes that honor Thanksgiving. Abraham Lincoln's Thanksgiving proclamation was delivered on October the 3rd, 1863. It taught us to honor our many blessings with the day of Thanksgiving and prayer. James Faust said, "As with all commandments, gratitude is a description of successful mode of living. The thankful heart opens our eyes to a multitude of blessings that continually surround us." This next quote is unknown, but I felt it really powerful and fitting for not only board reorganization, but for our team in McDowell County Schools. A grateful team is unstoppable because appreciation breeds motivation. We have so much to be grateful for this season. McDowell County Schools team is truly blessed to have a long, loving, and caring individuals who work diligently every day to ensure our students succeed. Tonight, we are thankful for each of them. Our teachers and teacher assistants, bus drivers and transportation department, child nutrition teams, and custodial staff and maintenance department, our technology department, and the many clerical positions that keep us going every day, from those who answer our phones to those who make sure that we get paid. We are also grateful for our administration and our board of education who set the tone and lead our schools. All this work would not be possible without students. And I am so thankful that we have excellent students in McDowell County, and they are just an extension of our community who stand by our side every day. In keeping with the theme of giving thanks, tonight it is with great pleasure that I get to announce this year's bounty has been incredible and historic. On Tuesday, November 18th, 2025, McDowell County Schools learned that we were one of 94 school districts across the state to apply for a capital needs-based grant, one of 10 to receive an award. We received a $42 million award to build a new combined school for Eastfield Global Magnet and Marion Elementary School. Folks, I just want to say that again. We received a $42 million grant. So proud of the work that took place to get to that point. We have so much this Thanksgiving season to be thankful for. Want to take a moment to explain what led up to that work and discuss our next steps. In 2020, the facility needs assessment stated that we needed a new school. We conducted two studies. One of our facilities, for our facilities, was in 2022, and another on our student populations in '23 and '24, both of which prompted us to seek new elementary school and to combine Eastfield Global Magnet and Marion Elementary School. From 2020 to 2024, we were moving through this process slowly and methodically. Once we established the goal of targeting a new school, I attended every meeting I could over the last two and a half years, getting in the room with those decided, those who decided our grant. On several occasions, I met with individuals from DPI who helped me to understand precisely what the rubric called for. June of 2025, we moved into warp speed. We entered into agreements to purchase two land parcels, conducted Phase 1 environmental testing on both sites, and bought the property, including obtaining approval from our county commissioners. We issued an RFQ, hired an architect who's here with us tonight, developed preliminary plans, brought in the Department of Transportation, and entered into an inter-local agreement with our county commissioners on this project. Mr. Frank and I met with Representatives Green and Johnson, and Senators Heiss and Daniel. I also had meetings with our state school board members, Dr. Janet Mason and Mr. John Blackburn. I met with the faculty and staff at Marion and at Eastfield, answered questions about the grant, reassured them about our job opportunities, and in a final push, I attended the last three months of the state school board meeting. I met with State Superintendent Mo Green, and our school board attended the North Carolina School Board Conference just the past couple of weeks, where we met with the team from DPI who awarded the grant. So that was a lot of stuff that's happened over the last five years, and that was just in a nutshell. Now what's next? That's the exciting stuff. That's what we get to talk about now. First, I want to take a moment to celebrate. Let's catch our breath and recognize that we have a $42 million brand-new school that's coming our way. Appreciate the support from the folks in the General Assembly who helped us make this possible, and the team of dedicated folks who are sitting along that back wall all the way around this room, and that's our principals, and our executive staff, and directors who work behind the scenes to help us pull this together. What a blessing that over the next several years, this money not only provides us with a school, but we hope that our local contractors and workers will help build the school, which will infuse the funds back into our community. As we begin the next journey, we will seek feedback from the community and staff on the calendar, the mascot, the school colors, and programs for the school. We're incredibly excited to have such great partners with our county commissioners, and they will undoubtedly be involved as we work to downsize. We will seek another study on our facilities to determine how best to move forward. The wheels are already in motion here, and we hope to have better understanding and timeline of all this work in March. In conclusion, I want to draw your attention back to the quote that I read earlier. "A grateful team is unstoppable because appreciation breeds motivation." Tonight, we need to be grateful, not just for this grant, but for one another and the work that we've done here in McDowell County Schools to bring great things for our community and to our kids. Chairman Frank, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Continue on item number 10, sir.
All right. I shouldn't have sat down. At this point, let me catch up here. We're going to do our student recognition. Ms. Daddel.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Frank, Mr. Abernathy, Dr. Gritt, and members of the board, and our esteemed guests. How do you follow up $42 million? Will you show the reason that we get $42 million, which is our kiddos and our staff? The North Carolina School Boards Association sponsors an elementary student poster contest every year. It is open to members, member districts throughout North Carolina. Elementary students are invited to submit a poster based on a designated theme selected by the North Carolina State School Board Association. The 2025 theme was "What's Super About Public Schools?" Students were encouraged to draw a picture of what makes their local public school super, which could be a teacher, school staff, or anything that they love about their school. There are two submission categories, kindergarten through second grade and third through fifth grade. NCSBA judges select the top posters from each submission category. Each category has first, second, and third-place winners, as well as honorable mentions. The student posters are displayed during the NCSBA Annual Board Conference each year. This year, the conference was held November 12th through 14th at the Curry Center in Greensboro, North Carolina. And we are proud of the representatives from McDowell County that was chosen to represent and be at the conference for the entire state to see. So first up, when I call your name, if you could please come to the front. We're trying to work out the handing here. So the third-place winner in the third through fifth grade was Saker Alachek from fifth grade from Eastfield Global Magnet School. Come on up here, buddy. Let's give him a round of applause. For honorable mention, we have Jaden Cook, second grade from Glenwood Elementary School. Honorable mention, Stella Gallion and Enli Hudson. They are both in third grade at Nebo Elementary School. Next up, honorable mention, Anna Kelly, fifth grade, West Marion Elementary School. And last, but certainly not least, we have Willow newcomer, first grade at West Marion Elementary School. Again, as they're standing up here, moms and dads, you get all the pictures you want, I want to reiterate that these were selected out of submissions from the entire state. So for McDowell County schools to have this many represent us, we could not be prouder of their hard work. Great job, guys. Moms and dads, if y'all want pictures, you can go ahead and take them.
Y'all turn around so the board can see the hard work.
That's great. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, guys, and you are welcome. That is for you to keep and for your moms and dads to put them up in their houses. And you got a certificate that you get to keep as well. Thank you all so much. You did a great job. All right, guys, y'all can sit down. Thank you. Good job. All right. So each month, we take the opportunity to recognize the outstanding individuals who go above and beyond in their roles to make a difference in our school community. Our Certified and Classified Employees of the Month exemplify dedication, professionalism, and a commitment to excellence. These honorees consistently demonstrate our core values, showing leadership, teamwork, and a genuine passion for supporting students, staff, and the overall mission of our district. Their hard work not only helps our schools run smoothly, but also create a positive and inspiring environment for everyone around them. Today, we're proud to celebrate and extend our heartfelt congratulations to our Certified Employee of the Month and Classified Employee of the Month for their exceptional contributions and unwavering dedication. First up, I'd like to call Principal Deanna Ray to recognize our Certified Employee of the Month, Ms. Marie Mock. Ms. Mock, come on up here as well.
Nice try, Ms. Mock.
All the way to the front. Good evening. It is my great pleasure to recognize Ms. Marie Mock. I have nominated her since I have been at Glenwood for anything that I had an opportunity to nominate her for, and if you have ever worked with her, you would know why. She's just an amazing human being and a leader and an educator, and I'm just blessed to be able to work with her. Now, if you know her, you know that she doesn't want or ask for that recognition, but I would like to read what I submitted about her. Ms. Marie Mock, it is with great enthusiasm that I nominate Mrs. Mock for Employee of the Month. Ms. Mock is more than an outstanding speech-language pathologist. She is a leader, mentor, and dedicated educator whose impact extends across our entire school and district. Mrs. Mock is a core member of the MTSS team, where her expertise is invaluable in making critical educational decisions regarding students' academic and developmental needs. Her role has been essential, especially crucial, excuse me, in the Exceptional Children Department, or EC. In a period of significant turnover at Glenwood, of new resource teachers joining Glenwood, Ms. Mock has been the only constant on our EC team. She has stepped up to train, mentor, and provide essential support for every new staff member, ensuring continuity and high-quality services for our students. Mrs. Mock consistently exceeds expectations by proactively seeking ways to enhance her professional practice and align her therapy with classroom instruction. A clear example of this is her request to participate in the intensive OG training, or Orton-Gillingham training. This was not a requirement for her role, but she recognized its value in ensuring her therapy sessions directly complemented the literacy instruction her students received in the classroom. This initiative demonstrates her dedication to an integrated approach to student learning. Ms. Mock's leadership extends beyond Glenwood as she serves as the district SLP lead. In this capacity, she is a trusted resource who guides and supports her colleagues across the district. She is responsible for mentoring and supporting new SLPs, SLP assistants, and student teachers, ensuring the strength of the next generation of therapists. Mrs. Mock possesses excellent rapport with students, families, and staff, and is highly regarded by her colleagues. Her expertise, selfless mentorship, and dedication make her an indispensable part of the Glenwood family, staff, and community. Marie Mock would be an outstanding and deserving representative of this honor for McDowell County Schools.
Next up, please welcome Ms. Tracy Widman to recognize our Classified Employee of the Month, Coach Joe Cash. Come on up, Coach Cash. He loves the attention on him, as you can tell by his face.
What I like to tell Joe just about every day is, "I am his favorite principal." And Joe likes to tell me. "I'm his only principal." I don't think we need to point out the obvious, but I would like to recognize Coach Cash. He is a rock star. As the athletic director at McDowell High School, Joe Cash plays a huge, huge role in the success of our programs. Joe constantly goes above and beyond to support our student athletes, our coaches, and our officials, and that includes things like sweeping, mopping, running the floor cleaner, emptying trash, getting water bottles for officials, and everything in between. I actually don't even know if Joe goes home. I think he might live at McDowell High School. I'm not sure. Whether he's organizing the countless details that keep our athletics programs running, and believe me, there are countless details, or cheering from the sidelines, Coach Cash always shows what true Titan pride looks like. His commitment and leadership help create an athletic environment where our students feel supported, our coaches feel valued, and our entire community feels connected. His behind-the-scenes work... His behind-the-scenes work often goes unnoticed, but its impact is felt in every single practice, every single game, and every single student who proudly wears Titan blue. We are deeply grateful for everything he does to strengthen and elevate athletics. Please help me by celebrating Coach Cash, his dedication, his integrity, and the incredible difference he is making each and every day.
Our last recognition tonight had the opportunity to attend a national conference and is not here with us, but it is Ms. Rachel Stewart. She is McDowell County Schools 2025-2026 School Counselor of the Year. This is the first time that we have awarded this recognition, and she was nominated among her peers of the other Student Services Team. And Ms. Stewart, if you don't know her, she is the counselor at Pleasant Gardens Elementary School, but goes over and beyond each and every day to serve students. Last year during the hurricane and PG Welcome in Old Ford Elementary, the words in the nomination was that Ms. Stewart had open arms to help serve students at not only Pleasant Gardens Elementary, but at Old Ford Elementary as well. Even this year, extending to this year, while the counselor is out on maternity leave at Old Ford Elementary, Ms. Stewart still goes down to Old Ford Elementary to serve those students at least two days a week. When we talk about serving students, sometimes when we are at one school, we think just about our one school, and we focus just at our one school. But Ms. Stewart has the mindset that we are here to serve all students. And so we are very grateful for her and all of her hard work, and it is truly a well-deserved honor to recognize Ms. Rachel Stewart as the McDowell County Schools Counselor of the Year. If you could just give her a big round of applause. When she comes back, we'll bring her back so that we can bring her up front as well. Thank you.
Item number 12 on the agenda is a report from our teacher representative, Ms. Amber Lawing. And Ms. Amber Lawing, we just always look forward to this moment, but please show mercy upon our board members. Thank you.
This always moves, and it's weird when I first get up here. So, good evening. Each month, I am reminded, I'm already going to start. Each month, I am reminded how much has been happening in our schools for so many years. The effort, the quiet routines, the small victories, the moments that look ordinary from the outside because they don't come with big announcements or big applause. The starfish recognition lets us shine light on the kind of work that makes a real impact through steady dedication. And one of those places where that happens the most is career and technical education. CTE is one of the most important spaces in a school. It is where students are learning real skills with real purpose, skills that build, design, care, create, and serve. From health science to business, agriculture to construction, technology to public service, these programs give students more than technical training. They give them direction, confidence, and pride in who they are and what they can do. CTE is not an alternative or a backup plan. It is a powerful pathway that this community depends on. It prepares students for college, for careers, for leadership, and for the kind of opportunities that come from knowing how to think, create, build, and problem-solve in the real world. The work happening is not just valuable, it is essential. These students will shape the future of our workforce, our community, and our county, and they deserve to be seen for the talent they bring and the strength they are already building. Some teachers teach lessons that stay with you, not just in what you learned, but in who you are, how you carry yourself, and how you treat others. They notice every kind of student, those who need support, those who need challenge, and those who simply need to know that they're seen. We have the privilege of honoring one of those teachers tonight, Mr. Allison. Your kindness, your steadiness, and your quiet strength have shaped so many lives across this county. And I will say that you and I are definitely going to have to stick together until June with all the pen clicking going on. It's rough. At my second board meeting, I asked Mr. Barksdale if I could use his pen for a minute because I needed it, which was not a lie, but only so I wouldn't grab it out of his hand and throw it at him. And I'm not above it. I have the podium to hide me. I put the pen on the other side of my notebook out of his reach. His face was priceless. He promised that if I gave it back, he would not do it again, and he did not. But tonight is a new night, and I'm sure that promise is already forgotten. It always is. So yes, Mr. Barksdale, I am reminding you again. Joking aside, Mr. Allison, you are a part of a special group of men who have chosen to pour their lives into education. Men like you remind us how important it is for students to see examples of integrity, humility, and hard work, the kind that shows up every day, quietly doing what's right even when nobody is watching. You've devoted so much of yourself to McDowell County, first as a student in our schools, then as a teacher who gave everything to your students, and now as a school board member who continues to give back to the community that raised you. You might not have started your career as a teacher, but you eventually found your way into the classroom where you truly belonged. When you taught electrical trades at McDowell High School, your classroom became a place where hard work and encouragement went hand in hand. You helped your students see what they were capable of, not just in their craft, but in themselves. You helped them find their spark. Did you catch one when I did "their spark"? You're welcome for that, okay? I was proud of myself for that one. If you ask your former students, they'll tell you that you built memories in the in-between moments too, like in the mornings when you would load the bus up and head to Riverside for a biscuit. Something that simple becomes the kind of story students tell years later because it wasn't just about breakfast. It was about belonging, being seen, and starting the day with someone who cared. I graduated from McDowell High in 2001, and while I was never a student in your class, I remember plenty of people who were. You were one of those teachers the guys especially looked up to, not just because of what you taught, but because of who you were. And I want you to know, your kids still talk about you with a smile, the kind that comes from good memories, and they call you Mr. Jimmy Allison, not Mr. Allison. They remember how you treated every student like they mattered, the ones who struggled, the ones who were steady, and the quiet ones who kept giving their best in the background. You noticed every one of them, and it made all the difference. They still tell stories about you. This is my favorite. They laugh and say that when you swung that paddle, you could feel the wind before it ever landed, giving them enough time to rethink their life choices and promise themselves they'd do better next time, wanting to make you proud just as they were proud to have you. They knew you cared more about their future than their mistakes. You gave your students a reason to be proud, not just of their work, but of themselves and who they were becoming. And you gave them a sense of dignity that can't be graded or measured. As life carried them into new chapters, careers, families, and everything in between, what they learned from you stayed with them in the way they work, lead, and care for others. They learned what quiet, steady leadership looks like simply by watching you. And the lessons you taught are still working, and every student who held on to something you said and leaned on it when life got heavy, that is what makes you special, Mr. Allison. You weren't just a teacher, you were a builder of confidence and character, and your influence is still felt in the people you helped shape. One of your former students said it best. I had the privilege of having Mr. Jimmy Allison as my electrical trades teacher at McDowell High, and he quickly became more than just a teacher. He was a mentor who made a real impact on my life. During the summer I worked for him, he trusted me with responsibilities no one else had given me at that point, and that trust gave me a confidence I didn't even know I needed. Even now, as an adult, he continues to be a source of guidance, encouragement, and friendship. Mr. Jimmy Allison is the kind of person who greets everyone with a smile and genuine kindness no matter where he is. I am truly grateful for the example he continues to set and the support he has continued to give me through all these years. Kyle B., McDowell High School, 2005 to 2008. You have heard this story read many times before, but tonight it's being shared a little differently, so let's listen.
One morning, a man was walking along a beach covered with thousands of starfish that had washed ashore during the night.
That wasn't me.
One morning, a man was gently picking them up, one by one tossing them back into
...glanced up and down the endless shoreline, but there were miles of beach and thousands of starfish. You can't possibly save them all, what difference can it make?
Another starfish was lifted from the sand and sent back into the waves. Smiling, the person said, "I made a difference for that one."
Sorry, I put it up the first time. I actually practice this a lot before I do this. You would not believe it, but I really do. These were the only voices that could make the starfish story truly yours. When I was putting your pictures and the student statement together for tonight, I spent more than an hour at the high school flipping through all yearbooks trying to find you. You were listed as Jim in some, Jimmy in others, and then suddenly James towards the end, which meant I had to start all over because I wasn't even looking for a James. Out of all those yearbooks, there were only four extra pictures of you, and two of those didn't help me at all because you were in staff photos. One picture was of you waving and smiling, you just saw that one, and another was you in your classroom with only your dark eyebrows and that white hair peeking up from behind that computer. And there's Mr. Spivey, can tell the proof of the good old days. Look at that, dark hair, no goatee, I'm telling you. I do want to know your secret because I can't make it through one school event without someone snapping a photo, but what really got me was this, and I wish I would have took, I wish I would have brought one. In those awful staff pictures that we always have to take every year, you were just cheesin' in all of them, every single one, and you only had four extra pictures in all the notebooks, I mean, all the yearbooks combined. I did not understand that one. Ms. Allison sent me some pictures, and I am so glad you are in more of your family photos than you ever were in the yearbooks combined, which honestly isn't hard to beat. Mr. Allison, here is your starfish keychain. I hope when you see it, you are reminded of the lives you have shaped and the strength you have added to this community. You did not just teach a trade, you shaped futures. You did not just prepare students for work, you gave them pride, confidence, and the belief that their effort matters. You're a proof that one teacher can make a difference. Quietly and steadily, you have spent your life helping others build their futures, and tonight, we wanted to make sure you heard that. You've changed life, Mr. Allison, plain and simple. We all know you don't like spotlight or recognition, and honestly, neither do I, because while we're being recognized, there are so many others who cross our minds that we feel deserve it more than we do. But, Mr. Allison, in your case, that couldn't be farther from the truth. I told Dr. Grit that if he ever gets tired of hearing the starfish story, I will not take it personally. No hurt feelings, I will just sit and cheer you all on at the school board meetings, and if any of you get tired of hearing it, please tell him. Maybe you can convince him, because I have tried and failed, so take the hint, okay? Okay. I couldn't even talk Ms. Becky into helping me either. So, in June, if not before, after my final presentation to the board and our community, I will be joining you, and we will stick together in the background, right where we've always felt most comfortable. But even in the background, you'll still be seen because people like you can't help but stand out. I want to say thank you to Ms. Allison. You made sure I had what I needed for tonight, and I am so grateful for your help. Mr. Jimmy, Jim, James Allison, thank you for shaping futures and the difference you made. It isn't going anywhere. Thank you.
Ms. Lawing, stay up there. Okay, if you would, Jimmy, come around with your whole family and you, Ms. Lawing, and let's get a picture.
Mr. Frank, if we could, I know you always ask the board members if they have anything to say, and when I saw this on the agenda tonight, I had a whole roast of stuff, but I'm not going to roast him, but I did want to say this. Brian Franklin and Joe Cash and a couple of them guys said it best, is sometimes we celebrate people after they're gone. Now Jimmy's got at least 50 years left that I know of, but I may not have. So, I just wanted to say this about Jimmy. We just heard about the teacher that he was, and I had the privilege of seeing him from the age of, I think I was seven years old. And I saw him through athletics, number one, as a fan, second, as a supporter, a volunteer, a coach, and then when I got older, I saw how he was as a dad to Jason. Jason and I played together. Somehow, he got the all-time best race car driver for a daughter-in-law also in the family. Then as I got older, I saw him as a dad when I was coaching, and I coached Casey, and I saw what kind of man he was to the coaches and the support that he gave us. The next one I'm wanting, it's still a subject of the biggest question mark in McDowell County history, and it's how in the world did he catch Andrea's eye as a loving husband? All right? So we're still trying to, and they'll be asking that question a long time. The next one is a teacher. I saw him as a teacher, and it was just phenomenal. Everybody loved Jimmy. You tried to, as a teacher, be as good as Jimmy and try to be favorite, but he had it done. An outdoorsman that cared about kids and their experiences more than his own. Yeah, he likes to take pictures with big fish and bear and everything else, but he wants the kids to honestly have a great experience. Now as a grandfather, I'm watching him, and he talks about his grandkids and, you know, got Savannah in the family, one of my favorite students. You're very, very gifted. Grandkids, he's getting old, watch after him, okay? And at least, the last and least, not least, is that what a great friend you have been. And I appreciate our friendship. I've always looked up to you, and it couldn't, this award couldn't go to a better person. So, thank you, Jimmy.
Thank you.
Jimmy, you got anything you want to say?
No, I don't think. I think he's been saying.
Wow, man, without words.
He said something about having a group hug.
Item number 13 on the agenda is a request to address a board public comment session, and this is kind of a unique request. We do have requests, and I want to say that this gentleman, I've known him for a long time. He's a deputy with the McDowell County Sheriff's Department, does an outstanding job. Department, does an outstanding job, is just a real great person. And Mr. Heath Helms, would you come up, but Mrs. Helms from the board, tell us a little bit about Heath. He's kin to you.
He and my husband are first cousins. Heath, you're a remarkable man, and I want you to know from us, we love you, we love Anna and Brooke and Jared. I was able to talk to Jared at the movies yesterday, he told me Anna was getting ready to start her, is it her last?
She's got four left.
Four rounds of chemotherapy, and she's doing well, she looks great online, but I just want you to take a message to her and tell her that our family, as I know many others here in the system, love her, we miss her, we're praying for her, I lift her up daily in my prayers, for her strength and endurance, and, and anything that, that your family needs, we'll be there.
I appreciate that. Let's not, try not to get emotional.
Hold on just one minute.
Okay.
Ms. Helms, I know you'd like to make a motion to let him speak.
I would love to make a motion to let Heath Helms speak.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Helms and a second by Mr. Schuford. Is there any further discussion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous, and of course, you've got a timekeeper, so your limit's an hour.
First off, thank you, board members, and family and friends here, try not to get emotional, but it's tough, when you see, good golly, people take time, I have a busy day, I know y'all are busy. And PG, Mr. Wheeler, I appreciate you, to do a little drive-through for my wife, it really uplifting my spirit, some of you school board members was there. She's not the worst shape, and she'll kill me, she don't even know I'm doing this. She's starting to lose her nails, there's some vain parts, you know, hair was one thing, nails is another. She's still battling, she does real good, she's strong, she don't rest a lot, but I just really wanted to say thanks to the family and friends. You know, you pray, you pray, and God's got everything, but then little lights shine, that's all of y'all showing your support and being where you are, and the comments on Facebook, it's just overwhelming for me, and I wanted to come tell y'all thanks, tell all the schools thanks, PG especially, that's been her home for a while, she was at Nevo for a while, her first year was at Glenwood, but every, everybody, just know that everybody has touched me personally, and it's through the grace of God that we're all gonna get through it, so I just really want to tell y'all thanks. I try not to take up any more time, but I will say this, I sat and listened to all the great things you said about Jimmy, and you never played ball for him, he didn't always smile. Go ahead and tell you, I mean, Jason can attest to that, he didn't always have his grin on his face, but no, seriously, what, what y'all mean to me and, and the support that this small community has for each other is just, is amazing, and I just really want to say thank you, and I, I don't, don't have a lot, I mean, when I'm on my job, I don't do this, I can't, it's, it's a different me. When it comes to family, which, like I said, I've known a lot of y'all a long time, and it, it's just, I'll always be thirty-three and a half, I'll never get no older, it's just me, but y'all don't know how much you mean to me, you, you just, you don't know, the phone calls, the, the cards that the kids did, she's still reading notes, that's, that's really all I got, I just want to say thank you.
I have some response I'd like to read to, on behalf of the board, but, on behalf of my family, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to the Board of Education for your kind thoughts, prayers, emails, and messages of support following the passing of our mother. Your compassion and care brought us great comfort during a difficult time, and we are truly thankful for your thoughtfulness and kindness, and with heartfelt appreciation, Crystal, Hamby, and her, the Hobbs family, and we thank you so much, and, and we, our hearts go out to you as well.
All right, up next, we've got a community recognition, well, I asked Ms. Jill Ward to please come to the podium, and while she's coming, I, I do want to just let folks know, we are on a regular schedule tomorrow, I know there may be some kids out there who were hoping otherwise.
I tried to ask, it didn't work.
But we will-
Yes, you always told me now.
We will be up early in the morning checking, but as of right now, we're gonna be on a regular schedule, Ms. Ward.
We can pray. I had asked Dr. Grit if I could speak at the board meeting on behalf of Old Fort Elementary School and our students and staff, so it's been one year since Hurricane Helene changed our lives. In the past year, we've grown, we've learned, we've laughed and cried, and we've done things we never dreamed we could ever do. The support that Old Fort Elementary received was truly unbelievable. We were loved big and we were loved well, and as we close this chapter in rebuilding and we're building a new school for Marion and Eastfield, I wanted to express our heartfelt appreciation to this county. First of all, to Pleasant Gardens Elementary, thank you for opening your doors and your hearts and allowing us to move in for the year, you gave a space, stability, and a place to belong. Erin Rayfield is amazing, she never hesitated when we had a request, she just simply made it happen. To the staff and students, Anna being one of those that welcomed us with open arms, you shared your classrooms, your playground, and your daily routines with us, we didn't just share a space, we became a family, and those friendships will last forever. To Ms. Brenda, the secretary who welcomed us on the morning announcements every morning, she announced our birthdays, our celebrations, she sent us off each afternoon with a smile and was excited for us to return. To Ms. Whitney, who can truly do anything and everything, we appreciate you. To the cafeteria staffs, Old Fort and PG who worked in a very tiny space, they somehow made sure that we were all fed and fed well each and every day. And a special thank you to Mr. Alan Carver, I don't know if you know Mr. Alan Carver, but he is very OCD, and he was probably the happiest person to see us leave PG, but he was amazing, he moved a gazillion boxes, he cleaned up after us, he worked tirelessly each and every day, and he never complained. To Pleasant Gardens Baptist Church and Pastor Ethan Hester, thank you for welcoming our littlest learners with kindness and care. I also want to extend our appreciation to the McDowell County Sheriff's Department for calling me on a regular basis about traffic, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you so much for the traffic support each morning, it was hard to get two schools into one campus, but it happened, and it happened because we had amazing traffic directors in the mornings. To the neighbors that lived around PG Elementary School, thank you for your patience and kindness when we blocked your driveways and the traffic was at a standstill. I also want to extend an appreciation to the McDowell County Schools administrative staff, many of you don't know this, but when we, when Helene happened and we moved on the weekend, some of the family of the MCS staff came and cleaned out the entire bottom of the Pleasant Gardens School so we could have classrooms, and they did this in one day. So, I wanted to extend our appreciation to them and your willingness to jump in and do whatever was needed, and that made such a huge difference. To Mr. Trinks, who began our recovery, and the entire maintenance department, under the direction of Jess Vaughn and Chad Marsh, thank you for cleaning, painting, scraping, shoveling, repairing, landscaping, the countless behind-the-scenes tasks that no one ever sees. Your dedication never wavered. Mr. Vaughn and Mr. Marsh held every contractor to the highest of expectations, ensuring that our school was not just repaired, but returned to a stellar condition. Because of your leadership and your attention to detail and tireless work, our students and staff were able to walk back into a building that truly felt like home again. To Suzanne Rampy, for overseeing the financial pieces of our recovery and ensuring our school received everything we needed to start back up. Navigating mountains of paperwork with insurance and FEMA is no small task, and because of your dedication, we were fully restored, and I appreciate that. To Ms. Baker, my fellow colleague principals, all of McDowell County Schools, their staff and students, thank you for the overwhelming outpouring of love and support you showed us, from the big gestures to the quiet moments of encouragement through emails and phone calls, you reminded us that we're never alone, your kindness carried us through some of the hardest days, and we will never forget it. McDowell County Schools is not just a school district, it's a community of schools. Ms. Dowdell, Ms. McArthur, Ms. Hamby, Mr. Hughes, thank you for always checking on me. Hurricane wasn't in my college handbook, we didn't get that class, but you were so kind to help me navigate unknown situations, your leadership and your encouragement and steady guidance meant more than you'll ever know, and I appreciate it. To the Board of Education, thank you for ensuring that a realistic and thoughtful timeline was established for our return home, for conducting the walkthroughs, monitoring the work progress, and for navigating public comments with care, transparency, and resolve. Your steady oversight and your commitment to doing what was truly best for our students and staff made all the difference. Dr. Grit, thank you for personally, patiently, and constantly reminding me that we would get back to Old Fort. Your leadership, problem-solving, and ability to navigate so many unknowns gave us confidence during the most uncertain times. You were not only the calm in the storm, you were the calm in the hurricane, and because of you, we never lost our vision. Thursday, November nineteenth, our school had a special program to honor the generous people who carried us through the season. Our students sang, they cheered, wrote poems, speeches, made posters and banners. It was a powerful reminder of what our community really means. There are simply too many people to name and too many people to think, and that alone speaks to the overwhelming support we receive. As we close this chapter and move forward, it feels important that we pause and show our gratitude. This year's school theme at Old Fort is Home is Where the Heart Learns. We are truly blessed to be back where our hearts belong at Old Fort Elementary School, and thank you for helping our Eagles continue to soar. Old Fort pride, deep inside, and from all of us, thank you.
Ms. Ward, hold up just one second. Mr. Schuford, do you have anything, being the representative from PG, you'd like to say, and then-
Mr. McGinnis, I'll give you the- I'd love to. Ms. Ward, I've, I've known you for many years, and I had the privilege of, my, my wife is on, on the staff up there, but when I've met with you and, and Erin, and talked about how things were going, I was never met with anything but positivity and, and we're doing great, and we're helping each other, and, and it's just working out. I didn't see sadness up there, I saw a lot of, lot of smiling faces, saw things continuing, continuing to work, and as they should, and even better, and my hat's off to you, and to Ms. Rayfield for, for a great, great effort.
Well, Ms. Ward, what a couple of years this has been. I remember we first actually met, we had met together that, I guess it was a Saturday morning to actually clean up the schoolyard out there, and little did we know, just a month later, all of that, but you guys showed tremendous resolve with your leadership, and as you correctly pointed out, Dr. Grit, he shone through the whole thing, problem-solving, I mean, he was right there, he's been right lockstep in the community the whole time, and you was talking about some of the public comments, you know, if there's a concern or a problem, we all want to address that, but when there's not, then we want to give credit where credit's due, and you deserve that credit, and we thank you for what you've done, Dr. Grit, we thank you for what you've done, and board, of course, we're all appreciative of what everybody's here done too, but most of all, the community and the kids, it's all for the kids, so, thank you.
Chad, we appreciate you as well, you sped the process along, of course, she gave you the recognition that you needed. Now, let me say this very quickly, I think we probably need about a five-minute break, especially for the children, so, take about five minutes, if you need to go to the restroom or whatever, go ahead and then we'll start back.
Invite Ms. Crystal Hamby up. She's working on our 2025-2026 LPS school improvement plans. Ms. Hamby?
Good evening, Chairman Frank, member of the Board, and Dr. Grit. Tonight I stand before you requesting approval of our school improvement plans for our schools that have been identified low-performing. These plans represent a collaborative effort among school leaders, teachers, parents, and district support teams to address the specific academic and organizational needs identified through data review and stakeholder feedback. The school improvement goals and strategies align with our district goals and expectations, creating the conditions for improved student outcomes. I'm extremely proud of the work our principals have done and are doing to make a difference for each of our students. Tonight I stand before you and I respectfully request the Board's approval of the school improvement plans for our schools that have been identified by the state as low-performing.
Are there any questions from Ms. Hamby from the Board? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve McDowell County Schools' low-performing school improvement plans?
Mr. Frank, as the Chair of the Correction Committee, I make the motion that we accept the school improvement plans.
One second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Suddles, and we have a second by Mr. Schuford to accept the school improvement plans. And is there any further discussion concerning this topic? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is a unanimous vote of nine.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate you, Mr. Suddles and Mr. Schuford, thank you and the members of the Board.
Thank you, Ms. Hamby.
All right. Next up, we've got something really exciting. Mr. Patrick McMurray is our architect, and he has Miles Wright with him. They're here to be able to talk with us a little bit about several of our projects. They're with Holland and Hammerick Architects, and they won the RFQ on the new school, and I did ask them, just as a little teaser, to be able to, and I didn't necessarily share that out with everybody, but I was hoping, and I didn't want to put too much pressure on you guys, to have us a little something tonight. I mean, when you get a $42 million award, you get pretty excited about it. So we were hoping you could give us a little teaser and also talk about the West Middle School ball field project that you guys are working on.
And just roll right in.
Yes, sir, the floor is yours, yes, sir.
Well, on behalf of Holland and Hammerick Architects and Miles Wright, I appreciate this opportunity tonight. We're thrilled about it, just like you are. It's not every day, you know, $42 million is out there for a new school project, so very exciting. We did work with the school system administrators on selecting two sites to look at and ended up honing in on the one by West Rock. And that, things that went into that decision were geotechnical site-specific items that overall helped us to make the best decision that we all felt like. So for the elementary school project, we're probably actually a little ahead of what we would normally be at, but when this went to DPI, we wanted to, you know, really, really blow them away. And so we came up with a plan that's similar to Old Fort Elementary. What we're probably looking at is roughly 105,000 square feet, and we're able to get that data from DPI based off of projected enrollment, what we'd like to see student-wise, student capacity. And so we send that data into NCDPI, and then they come back, and we go back and forth about, you know, how large the school should be. So I say it's similar to Old Fort. Because of the site constraints, we would be looking at a two-story, 105,000-square-foot, roughly 38 classrooms. But I do want to preface everything is, nothing is set in stone right now. Again, we did want to blow DPI away in our submission, so nothing's set in stone. The next step would be having focus groups with administrators, with maintenance staff, with students, with teachers, faculty, and, you know, we want to hear their needs and their wants and go through it all. And then also, when I say 38 classrooms, that's the stuff that's kind of easy to pinpoint through the NCDPI matrix. Things that are going to be school-specific, district-specific, are, you know, EC classrooms, specials, would you like to have a gymnasium, how many would it seat, auditorium-like environments, that sort of thing that makes it really district and school-specific. I'm gonna, so right now up on the screen is the site plan, I'm gonna let Miles kind of speak to the site plan. But like I said, this is beside West Rock between Court Street and Ridge Road.
Hey, good evening. Like Patrick said, before you see the site plan that we submitted to DPI for review and comment, this plan is also under review by DOT Municipal Planning right now to help us with the locations, the driveways, the amount of stacking that we need for student drop-offs, bus stacking, things like that. That is under review by Municipal Planning right now at DOT. And that's really just the first step that we need to help us determine what the site's going to look like once we get into the deeper planning stages of this project. As you can see right now, we have, on the left-hand side of the plan, we have a student drop-off area, we have guest parking and faculty parking on that side, we have an entrance coming in almost directly to, I guess, the entrance to the right, you can see, that'll be the entrance only, and what will happen is the students will come in that area, come drop off at the front of the school, and then come around and come right the entrance or the exit on the left-hand side there.
So where they're pointing to right there, folks, Patrick, the first entryway that you see on the far left, yes, that is closest to Clinchfield Baptist Church, and Nebo would be, you would be heading towards Nebo the other way, just to kind of help folks orient to where you're going in the room.
Correct. And we also have the bus parking will be on the far right-hand side, there'll be the bus entrance coming into the rear of the property, so the students will enter from the rear, there'll also be staff parking at that location as well. We have some area kind of depicted by some little soccer fields right there, which will be the out-ground play area for the project. We also have some playground areas, you can see kind of at the cross to the top right-hand side of the cross there, will be some outdoor play areas. We did have some site constraints on this project, there's, you can see the blue lines and the green to the right, there's are some streams of wetlands that we have to deal with, so we have to stay out of that area. There's also, you can kind of see the power line right away that runs through the project there that we have to stay clear of and stay clear of the existing power poles in that area. So there were some site constraints with this project, with this site, but nothing that cannot be worked around and made to work. This is just kind of a blow-up of the entrance area. You can see the entrance to the right, that's the entrance to the school, and the drop-off will be right at the school front up there. And like I said, we have staff and some visitor parking out front as well. So the students will come in the right side, kind of look around the front of the school, kind of look back around and come out the left side there, near the Baptist Church. And this is just sort of a blow-up of what the bus parking area is going to look like and some areas that we have depicted with some soccer fields right now as an outdoor play area, and you can see the playground areas as well, right there at the corner of the schools.
Yeah, and this area right here to the right, that's the larger play area, in this instant area, that's your PK and kindergarten, bus drop-off and pickup right here, with night bus parking, coming into a central corridor and inside that can, a lot like Old Fort can use after hours, and the school can be shut down. So here's our floor plan, I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. So this is a partial floor plan of the first floor. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
This is a partial first floor plan on the, if you're looking at it from Court Street 70, the left side, and that's where all your kindergarten, first grade, second grade, they'd all be located on the ground floor, along with specials and EC with the library up here in the center. Because the school plan's so big, we have to chop it up into different sheets, but here's the continuation of that front. And this is 70 out here in the front of the building, that'd be the, the library would be the main focus from the road. And then working down through the central corridor to this commons area before you get to the gymnasium cafeteria kitchen area with adequate drop-off area, loading dock space in the back. I went around Eastfield Global and Marion with Jeff Horn a few weeks ago. This will be a huge step up from some of the loading dock and sideline constraints. Eastfield Global, I think I count the 14 different elevations in that school, this has two with the elevator, so then you got your second floor, that'd be your third, fourth, and fifth up there with a STEM lab. And, you know, we feel like this is an opportunity to really do something that McDowell County Schools is proud of. It's going to be, you know, right outside of downtown Marion, right there on a prominent roadway, so, you know, we want to blow people away with the way it looks. And so that's your visual from Highway 70, looking up at the library, the two-story sections intersecting that, and then your gymnasium cafeteria area in the back. Any questions? Now the fun part starts, so we get to really start drawing it after we, again, meet with the focus groups and really hone in on what are the needs, what are some of those wants, and getting all those boxes checked.
Absolutely, and really just having, like I said tonight, you know, a chance to catch our breath and really just kind of take a pause for just a moment and begin to get some timelines in place. And March is kind of that first deadline that I've talked with Mr. Marsh about, you know, being able to say, okay, in March, we really need to, and obviously, Patrick, that's not yours, you go ahead and be working now, but that's ours. That's the timeframe for us to kind of catch our breath and start to make plans to be able to pull the community together, to do some of those meetings you're talking about and, you know, get these principals on board and make sure that we've got a school that everybody will be pleased with, and I think that's the important part. So thank you so much for sharing that with us tonight. Board, I don't know if y'all have any questions for them before they roll into the next. This is, like I said, just a teaser, we wanted to just throw something up there to show you that we had been working behind the scenes a little bit, so.
So the needs assessment is a printed document that you'll provide to us and projecting out 20 years or whatever?
Well, yeah, we'll check if it's 104 or just one double check, that's the number, or capacity versus... But, yeah, so they provide you...
So I think, I want to make sure I'm clear, Mr. Abernathy, in your question. The needs assessment is what we do as a county every five years, that we do a facility needs assessment. We're actually in the process of doing that with all of our facilities. Again, the last one that we did was in 2020, and in the last one that we did, we deemed that Marion Elementary School needed to be closed. That's really one of the reasons why we were able to get the grant. What Patrick and his team did for us is they went in and did an extra evaluation on that so we could submit it with our grant to DPI to show that's what the 14 levels of differing levels were in Eastfield and those things. So I want to be clear, is that what you were asking?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And I got a little mixed up, they provided you a space profile.
Could you go over real quickly the reason, I've had a couple of people ask me, why are we consolidating? And I've explained to a few people about our ADM dropping.
Yes, sir, that's a great question. So we have had a declining enrollment for the past 10 years. This year, we're down about 98 students. So when you look across that back row of those principals, they know it all too well because those are the conversations that we have to have about staffing and what that looks like. Well, eventually you get to a point where you're not just having conversations about staffing if you have 100 kids each year over 10 years. Mr. Wheeler, I think we've got some math people, I won't ask Dr. Wees, I don't want to put him on the spot. You ready, Dr. Wees? But I think that's about 1,000 students over the past 10 years. So if you do the math and you really start to think about it, we're in a position where we need to consider condensing or consolidating our footprint. So one of the reasons that you can be eligible for these grants according to DPI is to show the need for consolidation. In those two studies that we did, Mr. Barstow, both of them recommended that we consolidate those two schools. And, you know, it's one of those that is kind of glaring at you, but it's very much so glaring when you have two different studies from two different groups telling you the same thing. So, and then, of course, Patrick and his team will be able to help us bring that vision to light here, but that's really what that's all about. Yes, sir?
Eastfield was built in the mid-'70s, when was Marion?
Marion was built in the '50s, and then there was an addition that was built on it, I don't know the exact, 99, thank you.
1955.
1999, yes.
You do the man up on the...
Very old, yes.
That's as old as you.
There you go. Any further questions for Mr. McMurray before he moves into the West Middle project? Guys, thank you for sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you. And these two kind of roll right into one another.
It's kind of nice when you have some dirt from one property to go ahead and start balancing. It's kind of nice when you have some dirt from one property to go ahead and start balancing it out.
So, so what year might, what fall might we be moving in? Just curious.
Yeah, I gotta count back up. Cause this is all on the record, right?
So I've said 29.
29?
Beat it.
Thank you. Thank you. I won't ask.
Okay, um, so I'm sure y'all are all aware that, um, you've got federal funds for, um, some remedies at, at McDowell High and West Middle. Um, if you go on Google Earth now, you actually see, I guess the pictures, the satellite images or materials that they've been writing up in the program. So you can actually see how far the water's been, uh, before. Uh, but this is, uh, this is really to remedy, uh, some of the drainage issues at McDowell High School and West Middle. Uh, but also getting some of those athletic fields, the lower athletic fields up out of the floodplain. And then also addressing the entryway, you know, with, um, adding some, um, against, as adds to it, uh, dressing it up so that, um, you know, visitors and, and fans and students, they know that they arrived at the hospital and, uh, at West Middle. Um, this is a project condition sheet. There are a few alternates that I, I kind of want to, to hit quickly on this project because, um, anytime you're kind of digging in the dirt, Miles, you can back me up. Um, sometimes it can be a little tougher to quantify. And so you have the, you have the approximately $4 million to, for this project. Um, we have some, some add alternates to, to be able to play around with if we, if we go, uh, over or if we're a little under and we want to add some stuff. It gives the board, the administration, a little bit of control to, uh, to select some of those things. So real quick, um, those add, those alternates would be, uh, pickleball courts. And I'm gonna, we're gonna get into some detail and show you where all this stuff is. But it's, um, it's down there at the lower road on the rec field is the majority of the project site. Um, we're looking at doing pickleball courts down there. Um, sight lighting all the way up from, from the intersection, all the way up to, uh, really the ninth grade academy. Um, so, so right now that's not really lit at all. And, and so it's a pretty substantial lighting package as part of this project. Uh, masonry pier, pilasters going down the road. Um, right now, you, I'm sure you can all, you all remember that it's a chain link fence. So this is masonry pilasters with a black aluminum fence in between the pilasters, really dressing it up. Um, pickleball court, it'll have a parking lot adjacent to the courts. And so that's one of the, the, um, part, the, um, alternates to, we can either take that away or leave it. Um, and then there's a few more parking lots along that area. And then also, um, two, two more things. There's a, there were a lot of, and, and maybe it wasn't storm damage from the, from the hurricane, but along the, uh, third base side of the softball field, there's a lot of downed trees and stuff that are just lying on the, um, on the chain link fence, uh, just addressing that whole, uh, parcel line, cleaning that up for the softball field. And, um, and then also pressure washing and repainting the handrails on the, uh, the stair that leads from West Middle down to the, to the middle school baseball field. So that's, um, that's nine, nine alternates. That's, that's a, that's a pretty good amount. But again, it'll kind of give the board and the administration some control as, as, uh, when we get the, uh, the bids in. Miles, you want to just jump into what we're?
Yeah, uh, this is the, uh, lower field. You can see kind of the, uh, where the existing baseball field is located now. Uh, the, the goal of this area with the grant is to raise this area up out of the floodplain. Uh, so that will not have any, uh, additional flooding if, you know, God forbid another hilling comes, uh, comes this way. Uh, so the idea is to raise this whole area up out of the floodplain to, uh, to meet the, uh, requirements of the, of the grant. And also to protect the baseball field and the addition of the, uh, uh, pickleball courts and soccer fields and, uh, parking lot and all that that we're planning on putting down that way.
Where's the line that comes through about right there?
Correct, yes, about, about towards the, uh, out, very out of the infield right there is where the, where the existing floodline comes. Uh, as Patrick showed, we have four pickleball courts planned as an alternate. Uh, we're showing, uh, four, uh, I think it's U9, uh, soccer fields, uh, adjacent to the, uh, pickleball courts. Uh, we're showing a parking area, uh, down there. And we're, that parking lot's going to be gated as well so we can close that gate off to keep, uh, people out, uh, uh, during times where the fields are not in use. And we're also keeping an area to the right for the, uh, practice football field as well for the, for the middle school. Uh, you can see at the entrance to the, uh, to the high school, we have the, uh, proposed sign locations, uh, that you'll, you'll see in a minute about what those are going to look like. Uh, we also have the, uh, brick pilasters, pilasters going down the, uh, Highway 70, showing the aluminum fence in between the, those. Uh, basically going all the way to the end of the property. Uh, at the guard shack, uh, there, we're going to try to clean that area up a bunch. We're going to take out the existing pavement and put in a landscape median there with some nice landscaping to kind of dress that area up as well. We're showing the, uh, parking, the existing parking lots down there to be paved. Uh, there's an existing parking lot right beside the baseball field that's going to be paved. And I think that's an alternate as well. And then the one across the street as well, that one will also be paved as, as an alternate. Uh, there's some additional parking right there at the guard shack, right beyond, right beyond the gate, uh, that we're showing as an alternate as well.
And this, this is the existing base parking lot for the, uh, the old?
Yep. Which is right above, right above the old, the old pond there.
And, and you have a lot of chain link fences out there. Um, not everything will be the, the aluminum black pickets, but, um, all of the chain link will be switched out to our black vinyl and brown.
Yeah, especially, especially around the baseball field area. The whole baseball field area will be, uh, vinyl coated black, uh, chain link fencing around the baseball field area, including the, uh, backstop area. We've got that vinyl coated as well.
I know we talked about lighting a few minutes ago, but just to kind of go back to the possibility of having a pickleball court. Um, and I know, uh, Mr. Spavy, the idea of having lighting there and having people playing on campus at 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night is probably not a good thing. So we, we, you'll notice that there's no lighting there. So that, that facility, when the lights go out, it's time to go home, folks.
Uh, go ahead.
If this is farther up the hill, when you get to West Middle, uh, there's an outdoor classroom currently there. We're proposing a parking lot at that, that flat area.
And there's some sort of drainage issues in that area as well. There's an old sediment basin that's still in existence where the parking lot is shown now. Uh, that old sediment basin will be taken out and we'll install a drainage in that area to get that area to drain, which it's not, it's not doing now. The water's just kind of setting in that area.
And, uh, again, help the sheet size. This is a continuation of, of working the way up. About right there, you pick it up right here.
Yep.
So that thoroughfare being lined with, providing new striping.
Yep. And just to kind of, kind of give you an idea of what we're doing, right now that, uh, the road, basically from the middle school up to the high school is a three-lane, three-lane road. Uh, and previously, I, I guess when the middle school was built, traffic was planned to come in from the high school down to the middle school. So there was a need for three lanes at that time, but now the traffic patterns have switched and everything comes up from Highway 70. So to be able to save costs on this thing a little bit, we're taking the third row of, of the, uh, of the driveway and turning that into a parallel parking, uh, going up the driveway. That's for, you know, tennis, for softball, uh, for people to park down that way. They won't have to walk forever to get down to the softball field and to the tennis courts. Uh, so we're doing that. Plus we're adding sidewalks, uh, along the, the parking area. Uh, we're doing a bunch of, uh, high visibility crosswalks with, uh, with, uh, speed tables, uh, to slow traffic down coming down the, coming down the entrance way. I think that was one of the big concerns is the amount of, uh, the speed of the traffic coming down, coming down the, uh, coming down the road there. I know we're out there on a couple of occasions at, at the afternoon, coming out of the, out of the school, we kind of saw it firsthand. So, uh, that, there's definitely a need for that as well. There's also, uh, some drainage. Uh, of course, part of this project is the, uh, drainage, addressing the drainage. So what we're planning on doing to try to bypass the tennis court area and all that, uh, we're planning on putting drainage on this, on the new section of, uh, of road from the high school down to the middle court, middle, middle school to pick up, uh, the drainage in that area and kind of bypass around where the tennis courts can go, uh, to, uh, to keep all that water flowing down towards the tennis courts and down to the, uh, softball field at, at the middle school. So we're bypassing that area with, uh, with storm drainage as well.
So just as a reminder for the board, the intent of this, uh, grant money was to, um, capture that water as it came off the hill and to divert the water and move it into one direction. So you'll notice the sidewalks and all the things with the additional pavement and, and catch basins, um, that, that handle that. Um, but with that said, um, our parameters were very tight on what work we could, um, could actually do. And that's one of the things that we tasked these guys with, is coming up with a design that would help ensure that the water was, uh, was moving the correct way to meet the intent of the grant, but also to be able to, uh, to, to dress it up a little bit, too.
Correct. Yeah, dress it up, make it, make it look real nice.
Patrick, can we ask you a question on this? Um, so as far as the layout, uh, Mr. Garrett and I had measured at this and looked at some stuff a long time ago when he was here. But would it be even possible to take the softball field, the existing softball field, and put it where the, you have the practice football field there and do the parking lot between it? And I'll tell you why. We wanted to give the football field, the entire football field back to them because right now the outfield fence cuts into part of their field. So West doesn't have a football field. They used the high school. So if we take the softball field and put it down there, which will fit, cause we measured down there, and then took the pickleball courts that you need and moved them up closer to the high school tennis courts, that gets the pickleball courts closer to the gymnasium, which your PE kids are going to be using that instead of walking all the way down during the school day. Just my thoughts, because we looked at this at one time and it thought it would be a good idea to have softball and baseball together with a parking lot in between, cause there wasn't a concession stand in the past. Now we've got to. But there was a lot of problems with that and football not. Do you, you understand what I'm saying there?
Yeah, I know. Are you talking about high school softball or?
No, I'm talking about the middle school softball field.
Can you go back, go back to the, you can go back to the main?
The main one, yeah. So if I?
Yep, go back one. The, the site plan, the, there you go, that one.
So what I'm talking about here is softball field being here, okay? It fits back in there in the same direction as the baseball field, the parking lot in between. Even though the size of the gymnasium of West, the size of the tennis courts, we've got pickleball fences together. Uh, everything else is the same, but you put block down and softball, that gets everything together and you can get this to become a parking lot between the two. So that's what we talked about one time. I don't know if that plays a part into what the grant says and, you know, dirt moving and everything else. We, we would, uh, we would have to take a look at it.
Yeah, we could definitely take, I mean, we could slide the parking area over, uh, to where the pickleball courts are now.
For, for us, for us, the biggest thing is just meeting the intent of the grant.
Right.
Which means elevating, um, things. And, and to be honest with you, we, we hope, we, we hope that we could pull a pickleball court off, but that'll be the first thing to go. Pickleball court, parking lot there will be the first thing to go. Because there's, the money has to go towards diverting the water. So the sidewalks, the
Yeah.
coming off the hill is going to be first. So the question's going to be whether we, the board would like to take up another project, uh, potentially. And, um, in that, I, in other words, I don't know that we can get all that in one.
So when would bids be open on this? Roughly?
Yeah, so January 6th, January 6th is the proposed date, not starting until March 15th. January, February 7th is the date.
At this point, you don't have any synthetic turf planned right there, right? It's all?
It's all natural.
Is the squiggly line right there beside the parking lot, is that the bank area?
That's the outline of the existing tree area, yes.
That's the forest.
Cause I remember when we looked at it, the, um, elevation change there was tremendous.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Basically from the woods line straight up to the middle school, it's tremendous, tremendous, great change at that point.
It is definitely a wet area, too.
How much we can, we can do and can't do?
I mean, that's, that's definitely something we can look at.
I mean, you're just, you're turning a football field into a softball field.
I don't know if you need dugouts or anything down there or not, but there may be some addition we may have to do. But, uh, yeah, I, I don't, I don't see a big, it's def- like I said, it's definitely something we could take a look at and see.
I mean, just to me, it makes more sense, especially if you do want the pickleball courts, which they're hot right now. Everybody wants to play pickleball and get almost close to the school for safety as you can.
Okay.
I hope if, if the bids are high and pickleball courts get extant, I would hope before we do that, you at least ask and look at other funding partners.
Sure. I mean, I think that the, what we would need to do is, um, get the bids, bring that back to the board and make some decisions. Uh, you know, i- it's one of those that we're blessed to have the, uh, additional funding, uh, with the new school, but at the same time, we have an additional funding with the new school. Uh, so we've got to be cautious with our capital funds at this point. And certainly don't want to poor mouth, but, uh, that money will, that money will go, uh, quick, so.
And one, one thing we're looking at too, to try to, you know, try to tie the two, two, uh, projects together. We're going to need a significant amount of dirt for this project to bring those baseball fields up. And on the elementary school property, you can see kind of on the left-hand side there, there's a, kind of a huge hump there. Looks like the site has been graded out over the years. Uh, so we're looking at taking the dirt out of that west hump there to kind of grade the site down to where it needs to be for the elementary school. So we're taking about, I think it's roughly 25,000 yards out of that area, which is going to help us, uh, on the budget for the elementary school as well. Uh, we're going to include that in this project. So it's going to help our rally out, help out both projects because we're getting free dirt because the school system already owns that project. So we're getting free dirt from this side. It just has to be hauled to the, to the high school and the middle school, uh, for that. So it's, like I said, it's helping, helping out both projects by, by doing that.
Dr. Grit, is there not something that you had planned, uh, someone that's wanting to use that property and they said they'd help us clearing?
Yes, sir. And I think Mr. Marsh, uh, I'll give him an opportunity to talk a little bit about that this evening. But, uh, they have requested to utilize the property as a laydown, uh, for doing some work for the city of Marion. And we've, of course, agreed to that, um, and they'll stay out of our way. But as a condition of that, we, we've asked them to maybe do a little work for us on the side. So scratch our back, we'll scratch yours kind of deal. I'll let Mr. Marsh, uh, talk a little bit about that if you'd like to, Mr. Marsh. So I'll give you the floor when you come to the podium. Is that okay? Okay, thank you.
Um, mentioning the sign that's coming in on the campus. Um, it's a little deceiving because this sign right here is, uh, 12 feet high. And so you have a, a pretty sizable masonry sign on either side, uh, in McDowell High School. Logo and cast stone. You don't see the one from, for McDowell West, but it'll be more comparable coming into it. And with all the chain link fences and everything that we got there, we're going to have a white line on, uh, and the high lasters going down the highway. Something that can really tell you you have arrived at McDowell High School, West Middle.
What's the height of the star there, Patrick? I, I want to say it was like, is it 18 feet?
Yeah, I think it's 17.
17'4". That's beautiful.
Pretty nice to put the lines underground. That's kind of intensive, I guess. Thank you, Gary.
Folks, we appreciate your work and all your efforts to put together something that we can, um, you know, all, all be very proud of. That, that, that entryway, um, like we said, I mean, it meets the, meets the intent of the grant. Um, but it, but it does, uh, replace a, a sign that was, you know, it, it was in the flood zone. So we, we can, that is one of the things we can, uh, do in our fencing, to upgrade our fencing along the way. I think it's, uh, money well spent. I will also, uh, go ahead and let the board know that we have been in contact with Marion, the city of Marion, about the possibility, when you're driving down 70, you'll notice they have a sign there that says, "Welcome to Marion." It's kind of lackluster. We've talked a little bit, a little bit about it with, uh, 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 city manager, uh, Woody Ayers. And, uh, he, he has agreed to, uh, to look at that sign with us and, and upgrade it as well. And we talked with, uh, Patrick about what that could potentially look like. So as you drive in, coming from the Old Fort side, um, you, you should see, and, and we're really coming in from either side. Um, you should see an up, just a refurbished area all the way down Highway 70. It's going to be really beautiful. We, we appreciate y'all's effort and putting into it. And, and, uh, the Building and Grounds Committee, Mr. Barstel, um, you guys have done a tremendous amount of heavy lifting. amount of heavy lifting on this project in a short amount of time because we had to meet the intent of this grant. And Mr. Marsh, the work that you guys have put into it, I just want to say thank you. And our principals, this is one of those that we've been talking a little bit about it, but we've not even been able to share it or show anything. So tonight was kind of the first time to be able to debut some of the visions that have come to, kind of come on the computer screen there. We're very proud of them. Mr. Barstow, anything further?
No, sir.
Patrick, thank you. Miles, thank you.
Appreciate you.
All right. Mr. Marsh, you've got several things on the agenda tonight, and I'll just invite you to the podium just to take it up from there.
Thank you, Dr. Grit, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's always a pleasure coming forward to the board. So in the interest of time, and as was brought up by Mr. Suddles, it was my intent tonight to come before the board and request board action because, as was pointed out by our architect, we do need to move forward on this project. But what I would like to recommend and request is board action with some instruction to our architect. I would like to request board action to move forward with the plans as presented for the West McDowell Middle School project with the addition of asking for a 10th alternate on the plans to look at the costs associated with moving the softball field as Mr. Suddles had laid out, if that would be agreeable to the members of the board.
Do we need to make that motion, ma'am?
I'd love one, sir.
I'd like to make the motion as stated.
I'll say.
Thank you. Okay, hold on just a second. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barstow, and I will reiterate and read the motion. And a second by Mr. Allison on the 10th, the additional 10th project addition to the West McDowell Middle, McDowell High School grant project. And Mr. Marsh, if you would give me the motion again?
Yes, sir. Yes, our request that the board approve the West McDowell Middle School, McDowell High School grant project as presented with a request for the architect to add a 10th alternate that includes relocating the middle school softball field. Sir?
Do you have that in this meeting? Okay. All right. We have a motion again by Mr. Barstow and a second by Mr. Allison. Is there any further discussion as to the motion that's been made? Mr. Suddles, you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Just a thank you, thank you. Okay, all those in favor with no further discussion signify by raising your right hand. Mr. Barstow, that's unanimous with a nine vote. Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, our board and board, the director has been really hustling. I want to talk a little bit just briefly about each one, as I always do. I appreciate Mr. Thomas's efforts. We've actually had to send a couple of our brand-new buses back for warranty work. But the reason that we're able to do that is because our mechanics are so thorough. And so I appreciate them taking the time to do that because our kids certainly deserve it. Mr. Berryhill and his staff have been doing the lion's share of the work. And I know Mrs. Wimmen could talk about it, but just today, but they were at McDowell High School working on some camera work today. So we, I just want to say how serious we do take the input from all of our principals when it comes to things that you believe you need on your campus to make your campus safer and more effective, and we're working on all of those. And so we appreciate the communication. Mr. Haynes and his staff, the sheer magnitude of Thanksgiving meals that they put out and the thousands of meals they cook every day, it's just eye-watering on the hills, a very tough situation, which we had talked about before, Mr. Haynes losing his fog. Safety, we continue to await disposition of our grant application for the Stop School Violence Grant, which we anticipate an additional million-dollar grant. So we're waiting there and feel very good about our application. Athletics, as you saw Coach Cash here today, and I thought Mrs. Wimmen did a wonderful job of highlighting just some of what we know Joe Cash to do on a daily basis. I mean, what he does is just, is truly awesome, and we appreciate Coach Cash for everything that he's doing there. But our middle school and high school winter sports are certainly well underway. Appreciate the members of the board who attended the fall sports banquet at McDowell High School. Appreciate seeing several of you there. Mr. Vaughn, his staff continue to address the mountain of work orders that continues to pile in on Sherpa Desk. And just today, he and I were talking about, I think we were at six different schools today addressing HVAC issues. And so we're well over 140 work orders just since March that have been put in HVAC. And so the work that's being done there is just, it's staggering and very much appreciated, I know, not just by me, but by all. As was pointed out earlier, with regards to our grants, incredible and certainly proud to have a small part of that, but really, it just means that the work continues for us. And so we appreciate very much Mr. Chad Young and his staff with the district's DOT staff here and everything that they've been able to do for us. Again, we talk about collaboration, but there's so many different layers of collaboration, and DOT is nothing but in the middle of that. And so they had a third-party group that was not only at Eastfield Global, but also at Marion Elementary. So I appreciate both of our principals working there. We maintained a safe campus, but also was able to get traffic count numbers. And these are integral to them to be able to get that traffic study pushed through with Raleigh. As Holland Hammerick pointed out this evening, and as Dr. Grit pointed out with our third-party, some of the project that we saw from the Ridge Road property, I was in contact with the board's attorney and spoke to Mr. John Henning. And Mr. Henning has assured me that it was well within our authority, Dr. Grit specifically, to be able to approve a laydown area for a third-party organization that was contracted by the city of Marion. And so this is our turn to repay some of the good stewardship. And so we sent a document to Mr. Henning for him to review. He changed it, sent us back something. We got it in front of the contractor. They have since signed it. And so what it's basically doing is there's a third-party contractor who's here and hired by the city to do sewer work, and they're doing infrastructure and sewer improvements for the city. And they're going to use a small portion of that area as a laydown area for piping and other things. And while they're there, they just like, Chad, let us know what we can do. And so my request is that I'm going to ask them, and have asked them, is that what you saw today from Highway 70, it showed you the very front of the school, where you can't see that now because there's a row of pine trees, some small scrub pines that are there. And so I've asked them that prior to their leaving the site in the middle of March, that they try to take some of that down for us and so that it free open our site. I think that will create a lot of things, and one of them is some excitement. So when people start seeing some trees moving, it's going to get excited. And it's important, I think, for people to understand that, you know, that $42 million is coming back this way, and that's really something that we should be celebrating. So I'm looking forward to getting that excitement rolling. As I had mentioned to the board on a number of occasions, I just want to say thank you. Can we go to the pictures of the outside work? Just want to appreciate the board's confidence and Mr. Barstow from the Building and Ground side. We, you know, we asked for a quarter of a million dollar concrete project. The board stood behind it, and I appreciate it. So we are done with setting concrete drainage boxes at Old Ford Elementary. We have completed sidewalk steps and ramp improvements at Marion and Glenwood. And now what you're seeing is, scroll through the sides, Garrett, this is at Nebo Elementary School. This is all-new sidewalks that we have installed. Keep going. Here, and you can see some of this, it's pretty intricate. I mean, they have, and while they were there, we talked about some drainage issues and some cracking. And so we kind of extended a little area down to the bottom, but steps, sidewalks, go to the next one. And this is one of my favorites, and I know Mrs. Bagwell could talk about this, but that ramp was an incredible disrepair prior to us being able to get that fixed. It's in the middle of the courtyard. And so it was one of those where not just the children with disabilities were at risk getting up and down it, but people who were maybe assisting. And so really proud of this. One thing you'll notice is, Chad, where's the handrails? They're being fabricated, but went ahead and poured the concrete while we had the opportunity to do that. But the handrails will be installed as well. So really proud of the work that's being done there. And if you've driven by East Middle, you've seen a bevy of equipment laid out front there, and that's what they're doing there, as well as addressing the sidewalks that had been a complaint from anybody who's ever walked on them in the last year or two or whatever. It's just really uneven and unsafe. And so we're working on it. So I just appreciate the board on that. Garrett, can we go to the Duke Energy easement pictures? Approximately a month ago, I received a RFI, a Request for Information, and a telephone call from a nice young lady with Duke Energy. And she said that she had a proposal for the board, and she wanted to know about getting an easement approved at Nebo Elementary School. And so I contacted the board's attorney, Mr. Henning, and I'd like to read what Mr. Henning has outlined for the board. The procedure for approving these is, in his words, dead simple. General Statute 115(c)-518b permits the board to simply grant easements for public utilities. It does require board approval, though. There are no requirements to provide any public notice and/or declare the property surplus or anything of the kind. Just approval on the next agenda. But I wanted to take it a step further and make sure I educate everybody because, again, as was pointed out tonight, we try to operate in the sunlight. So some of the pictures you're seeing, so 254 is your elementary school, Mrs. Bagwell's elementary school. Off that pretty steep embankment that goes down the back towards Railroad Drive and North Carolina 126, you'll see a red, off the 3570 or across the street there, you'll see a red with double or triple set of arrows. What they're asking to do is relocate a telephone pole in an area that is not used by the school and most likely never will be. So tonight, Mr. Chairman, I come before the board and after conferring with the attorney, request motion for board action to approve the easement proposed and approved by our attorney for Duke Energy.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the easement from Duke Power in the vicinity of the Nebo Elementary.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion, a request of Mr. Marsh for the Duke Energy easement request at Nebo Elementary. Mr. Barstow, and we have a second by Mr. Abernathy. Is there any further discussion from the board concerning this motion? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous, nine vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, sir. And if it pleases the board, I'll have paperwork with Mrs. Smith at some point for your signature, sir. Garrett, can we please go to the pictures of the bus? If the board were to call, one of the things that we were discussing and, you know, and doggone Mr. Suddles, like stealing some thunder, I swear, no, and he brought up, Chad, what can we do about getting a bus wrapped? And so you can't surprise Donna. He yanks it out from under you. But we've been working on this, and, but his interest spurred along. So I just want to say, Mr. Suddles, thank you for your continued support of athletics. Really do appreciate that, brother. Yeah, well, so let me, I'm going to explain what I did. So we want to keep things local. There's no requirement to, but boy, isn't it nice to try to keep things local. So I contacted the only local folks that I knew, and the first one was one that I have done some business with over the years, in a number of different capacities, called Master's Hand. And I spoke with the owner and said, "Do you wrap them?" And he said, "I do, but I'm going to, I'm going to give you an official refused bid because I am so busy." He said, "I'm going to do something I'm not good at, my wife is telling me to do." He said, "But when I do that, I'm going to pass you along to another local contractor, brand-new." And he said, "And I think this guy's going to do a great job for you." So he did. He passed me along to another local contractor on Highway 70. And after several iterations of us passing back and forth, these are some of the results. So we checked, number one, I want to say the board, we checked with DPI. There are a couple of requirements for activity buses. Those have all been accounted for. Like what? The number of the bus must stay intact. The county for the school bus must stay intact. The words "activity bus" must stay on the front and rear of the bus, or in the military fore and aft. So everything else is within good taste of what we choose. I spoke with Mr. Thomas, and one of the things that he has taught me about is, Chad, if you give that brand-new activity bus that you got, that the board just bought, and you do it, give it to athletics, elementary school principals are going to kill you. So we're not doing that. We're going to take a slightly older, but very much capable bus, and we're going to wrap it. And so this is the, this is, first slide, next slide? It shows you the back. I just think this is, I'm in love with this. It pops. I think it says pride, and it shows, it shows some, you know, investment in our athletes. Next slide. And this is a little bit more of a close-up. I want to state publicly, I know, if we put every single thing that we did in every, there's not enough room on a bus. And so my commitment is to continue with the board's approval, to continue to find ways to get everybody involved, whether that means a band bus or a wrestling picture on it. There's ways for us to do it. This is bus one. This is bus one. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll come before the board tonight after some discussion and requesting motion to be allowed to proceed with our one-of-a-kind wrap for an activity bus.
I'd like Mr. Suddles to make the motion.
Well, hey, I was going to say, nobody will make that motion but Mr. Suddles.
Let me say this, if I'm in elementary school, I want to ride this bus. You know, so, no, I will make the motion. Chad, again, thanks for doing that and looking into it. I want to make the motion that we accept the proposal to wrap the bus.
I'll say.
Mr. Marsh, do we have, we don't have prices yet, do we?
I do, sir.
Okay. That kid out there is great.
Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, he has been, he has been so excited about being part of anything that has to do with McDowell Titans and McDowell County Schools. And the fact that we had a no bid and then we had somebody bid, I can tell you that it was, it was a lot less cheaper than Mrs. Rampy thought it was going to be because I got fussed at. And so, but it's well within our approval, sir, and I can show anybody that wants to see.
Well, sir, let me interject right there. She might just have second thoughts since Clemson beat Carolina, South Carolina this past week.
That's one of the ugliest things I think I've ever heard you say, Mr. Frank. Totally uncalled for, sir. Can we just vote so I can sit down? That's awful.
Do you have, do you have the second wrap in mind?
I do, sir. Yeah. Oh, you know I do.
You don't have to tell us.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I'll show it to you soon.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Suddles and a second by Mr. Allison. Were you going to pass on the cost or?
I'll tell you if you'd like to, sir. It's $8,800. $8,800, sir. And comparatively speaking, that was about a third what we expected, and it beat what Master's Hand was going to be able to do for us. So we're, and keep it local, we're very, very happy with that, so.
Win, win.
I think so, sir. I think so.
I'm telling you, I know Mr. Suddles is happy. Is there any further discussion on the approval of this motion on the new activity bus wrap? Does anybody have any else, anything else for the board? Okay, with no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is unanimous.
That concludes my comments.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure if Dr. Grit or you would be the one to answer this. But we've been hearing all these numbers, grants here, grants there, and I think the public needs to know the amount of grants that y'all have been involved with, especially during your tenure here. And this would be grants that's received outside of what we, the state or the counties funds us.
I'll defer to that.
There's a lot of work that goes into these grants. And at first, what is your tenure?
Two and a half years.
Two and a half years.
And Mr. Barstow, I would, I would estimate, and I couldn't give you an exact, I think Ms. MacArthur probably wrote a grant today that we might, we might get, or Mr. Berryhill did, but we're somewhere in the neighborhood of about $60 million with the $42 million that was accepted for the award that we got for the, for the building and then the additional grants that we've gotten so far with the mental health grant, gear up grant, the lease grant, the Dogwood Health Grants, this, this $4 million for the project that we're doing at West Middle School Ball Field. So somewhere around $60 million in about two and a half years.
I'd just like to thank you for your hard work because I do know in writing grants, it's a tremendous amount of work involved.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and it's one of those that, I don't write those grants, Mr. Barstow. I think the folks sitting around the tables here... I think the folks sitting around the tables here are the ones that do the work. We bring a vision to them, and they find a way to get those things done. I'm proud of them. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, we're proud of them too, every, every single one of you. It's fascinating. I've never seen so much money come in in my, my time, and I'm appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh.
Thank you, Mr. Marsh. And speaking of money, Ms. Rampy likes to tell people, no. You thought I liked to tell people no, Ms. Long? Ms. Rampy never says anything but no. Ms. Rampy, if you want to just give us a financial update and?
I will. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Facilities had important, but lengthy updates. So we will, it's a competition every, every month. Just a couple of things on the finance update. We did quite a bit of updates last month, but I did want to give you a quick update on the state of the state budget, which is the same as it was last month, which is we do not have a state budget. So we are still authorized to pay our current salaries and with our current base, base budgets that we have. So we are still in a stalemate there, and we hope to maybe have something, they think, in the first quarter, but there's no promises of where we're at. But just an update there, still no increases for our employees, but we are on that continuation budget. So we are able to pay our salaries and our, with our state funds. The other update I have is regarding the audit status. I don't know if you remember from last month, but the federal OMB or the compliance supplements have been delayed because of part of the federal shutdown. We are still delayed on those. But we do now have approval to go ahead and submit our audits on October, by December 31st, as long as we do not feel like the compliance supplement will change. Because of any grants that we've gotten from the federal government, we do not feel like that would change any of the audit steps. So we will go ahead and submit our audit before December 31st. If anything comes back where they have a different section or a different compliance that they need to check, then we would resubmit that. But our plans are to have that submitted by December 31st. Hopefully get that back from the LGC pretty quickly, and then we'll have a finance committee to be able to review that as soon as we get that back. So we are a little bit later this year because of that. Generally, they are due in the month of November, so we're at least 30 days out from where we normally are. But we'll get that processed and get it back to the finance committee as soon as we can. But that is my update for this month.
Does anybody have any questions from Ms. Rampy?
Mr. Frank, not necessarily a question, but just to the board. You know, with finances being held up at the state level, it's making things difficult for us as far, as far as being able to sit down and really look at and evaluate things. But I continue to be proud of where we are with our teacher supplements. And I know we have work to do on some others, that's, there's no question about it. But this process is somewhat delayed when you're dealing with the state. So I know Ms. Rampy's been looking at that. Mr. Marsh has been talking about it, as well as Ms. Daddle, on, on, on looking at that as a possibility. But that is something that we are kind of, somewhat handcuffed at this point, but we do hope to be able to have some of those. Really, it's your committee meeting, finance committee meeting coming up in January.
Can I ask you a question? Because I got the question earlier, and I wasn't real sure about it. Are we, as a system, required to use a state health insurance? We have to use the same ones? We can't go against the state of North Carolina and try to source out our own?
Right, exactly. Yeah, that is the state health plan for the teacher and.
So we're stuck with that no matter what?
Right. Same thing with the retirement system.
And all the prices.
That's right.
Same thing with the retirement system as well. Those are the benefits that they offer. You know, they go out as a group to close that, and that's what we have to offer.
Okay. I thought so, I just wanted to make sure.
So compliance testing, this is a question, is complying with receiving federal dollars as well as grants and, and, and our annual?
Right, exactly. Every year, we, there's a compliance supplement that comes out for state and federal. State's not been held up. In general, state funds don't change a lot, but federal comes out every year. And unless we get new funding, which there was new funding with, even you had some extra funding, things like that, that we did have, that we were finishing up in 20, in June 30, 2025. So that would be the only thing. But we, those were sources of funds that we've had for a few years, so we don't feel like that's gonna change. But every year, they send a compliance supplement out for the auditors to know exactly what they, they need to focus on testing-wise, materiality, also the number of samples, things like that, and then just what the purpose of each fund is to make sure that they're compliant.
Thank you, Ms. Rampy.
Item number 16 on the agenda, new business request to amend the monthly closed session meeting time of the Board of Education. Mrs. Helms contacted me with a worthy request, and I told her we'd put it on the December agenda. So I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Helms and listen to what she has to say, and then we, as a board, will talk about it and make a determination. So go ahead, Ms. Helms.
Yeah, I had just requested that we go back to meeting after the regular meeting. It's becoming increasingly hard for me to get here by 4:30. I have to, you know, see my last patient about 3:30. Best laid plans, advising me, and I had one walk in at 5:00 to 4:00 today, and so it just makes it really hard for me, especially this time of year, to be able to be here by 4:30. So I had sent out an email asking that we returned to meeting after our regular meeting for closed session.
Does, what, so are you making a motion to change it to 6 o'clock, the whole, the beginning, and then our closed session at the end of?
Yeah, the way we did previously, at least for you guys to consider it.
Yeah, well, what we'll do is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Greer, but what we'll do is we'll go ahead and let you make a motion. We'll vote on it, and then if there's another, if, if we don't pass it, then we'll have another motion to either leave it the same or another option, if that's fair enough with the board. Is everybody in agreement with that?
Can we comment before you do that?
Oh, absolutely.
You know, I want to.
Well, during discussion time, after she makes her.
Yes, sir, that's how I understand it.
Okay, all right. At this time, go ahead and make your motion.
Oh, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the monthly closed session meeting time of the Board of Education closed session for, after our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay, and now we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Helms to change our meeting time for the closed session from at the beginning at 4:30 until the end, like we used to do prior to changing it now. Mr. Suddles has seconded that. Now we're open for discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Suddles.
I was just gonna say, that's what I was asking for, too. Me being the young one, I'm still working. I wish I could retire, but I'm not retired yet. And there's a lot of time that I'm four and five hours away. Like today, I was in Charlotte. I drove to Charlotte this morning and drove back to make sure that I'm getting here. So it makes it difficult at 4:30 to get here. I don't want to miss the meetings. Obviously, I don't mind driving the five hours, and then I'm driving five hours back usually after the meeting. So it makes it a little more difficult. Six, six o'clock gives me a chance to, to take my time to get here. So I would appreciate that on my part.
Are you bragging about this or you?
No, I'm just saying I'm, I'm one year younger than you, Mr. Baker.
You're the only one that doesn't have any brag.
It's in my beard.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I, I just want to say real quickly, you know, when I saw this pop up on the agenda, I did not think there'd be a whole lot of discussion. And this has nothing to do with this, but I will tell you, there've been several people that have contacted me just today and asked me to not go along with this. And the one thing that they kept bringing up, and I initially said, well, I'm gonna use your name. And then I got to thinking, what I'd like to do is, I think we ought to listen to the administration. And I'd like, if you feel comfortable enough, tell me, or tell the board, what, by going back, how that will affect, and if it is a positive to go back, or if it's a negative. And I think that that's one of the things that we need to look at. And I sympathize, but I had no idea that I would get as much feedback on this as I did. And I'd like to ask your opinion, since you have contact with your administration.
Well, my favorite thing to say is I work at the pleasure of the board. But I will say that having the meeting at 4:30 with the closed session, I feel like we're much more fresh and much more into the, into the meeting at that time. It provides us with an opportunity to have a closed session. If we need to carry it over, we can carry it over. On a couple, on, well, not a couple of occasions, several occasions, we've came in at 4:30, and it's been 15, 20 minutes. So it's quick. That was not necessarily the norm before when we were doing it. After the closed sessions seemed to just kind of go on and on and on. I don't know if the condensed amount of time beforehand has made them go quick. I don't know. I don't really have the answer to that, so. But, but from my perspective and from the staff's perspective, you know, getting out at a reasonable time is, is, is nice. But again, certainly work at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any other discussion?
I mean, I would just point out that in our closed session today, we had a lengthy discussion on certain things, and it went 25 minutes. So that 25 minutes, if we put it on the end of this, which we had a very long award ceremony, I talked too much about Jimmy a little bit. I'm just saying, you know, you're looking at our typical closed sessions being 25 to 30 extra minutes. It puts us out at nine. The previous board, there were times when we were in here till 10:30, 11 o'clock, to make sure that we did, 1 o'clock, to make sure we did the right thing for the kids. I don't want us to leave out the kids. So as long as I have to stay here, it doesn't matter about my job. I'm staying here until the right thing's done for the kids, whether it's 4:30, 9:30, 1:30, whatever.
I mean, it's, it's one day a month, and I mean, even just from a business perspective, if I have to not see four patients, by cutting off an hour, I mean, I work for myself. I mean, I think the ones of us who still work, I mean, I get it, people want to be home early, but, but I also knew that coming in, that that was part of, part of my responsibility.
Let, let me.
And sometimes I think we rush when we're doing it beforehand to get to dinner, and what if things come up during our meeting that could, could stand a little bit more conversation? Also feel, and I was just gonna say this, there's a lot of discussion behind closed doors that we're not, a lot of us aren't privy to, and we may have questions. I mean, I, I think we can discuss things a little bit more, not be in such a hurry sometimes to, to get out of here. I mean, that's just my personal opinion.
Is there any other discussion?
There's discussion behind closed doors on the start of the meeting.
Well, like, you know, the plans for the school, lots of things that are, you know, we kind of just hear, that are going on that we've not had the opportunity to, to hear about, or. Because we don't really talk as a group anymore about anything. We just kind of rush through prior to the meeting and, and kind of go on, on about things, but. I mean, I'm just here to ask you guys. I mean, it's money out of my pocket, actually, but it seems like no matter how, how hard I try to get out on time, and I can show up late, but I, but I think that's my responsibility to do this as well.
I, I empathize with starting, starting later. It, it, to me, starting earlier gives us better decisions. It gets us out of here at a reasonable time. It affects hundreds of people that, not hundreds, but when you extend it out to the families, it affects a lot of people and puts people home at a, at a reasonable hour. So I'm, I'm gonna be supportive of, you know, maybe you could move it to five, but I'm moving it back to six. I, I'll, I'm not hard, hard-nosed on it, but I'll, I'll.
No, I mean, I'll go for five. I'm talking about having our closed session after the meeting instead of before.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think the way we're doing it is better because it, it, it puts an ending on the closed session. We would sit in here for hours, previous, the previous board, and just be all over the place all night long, almost, with, with closed session. And it kind of gives us more structure this way. But I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. However, however we do it, I'll, I'll be here.
Is there any other discussion? All I'm gonna say is vote your heart, what you think we really need to do. So if there is no further discussion, we will take a vote, and the vote is to change it as the motion has been made to put in our closed session at the end of the session rather than at the beginning of the session.
We, we are changing the time from 4:30 to six.
Right, that's correct. And so at this time, I'm saying, all those in favor of the motion that's been made by Ms. Helms, signify by raising your right hand. Okay, that's four votes. Am I correct? Raise your hands again one more time.
There's five.
Five, okay. Two, three, four, five, okay. Okay, there's no need to make another motion that carries. So we'll start.
So we made it five.
No, no, no. Six, six was the motion. Now, if somebody wants to, to amend that to five o'clock, then I don't see why we don't, you know, we're just talking 30 minutes later. Why don't we go ahead and keep the closed session at the beginning? Because if you're saying we're there 25 or whatever minutes, you can amend your motion if you'd like.
No, I guess I'm just confused now.
Okay, well, let, let me try to, try to. Okay.
Because we've always met at six.
Right, right.
Which is what we'll be doing.
Yeah, but you, then you said five o'clock. You, you said, I, I can live with five o'clock.
I think Mr. Abernathy mentioned five.
I thought you just said.
I just did, but I think Mr. Abernathy brought it up.
Okay, well, so you don't want to, you don't want to amend your motion?
We can always, you know, if we have to, if we've had a lengthy discussion at the beginning, we can always close out, have a regular meeting, and go back in.
Well, we've got that on the agenda.
Yeah, it's right there.
It's, it's always there.
Yeah, so if we have to. So if, if, if five would work, is that gonna help you that much?
Well, all I'm saying is if, if we want five, we need to amend, she needs to amend her motion, or what she's, right now, we're at the start of six.
Or make another motion.
We gotta get rid of this one.
Oh, I thought we'd already voted.
We have.
Mr. King?
Yes. Okay. Yeah, raise your hand to five.
Now, we've.
Is there any law against five fifteen?
Change the minute or, or?
What about a minute into five fifteen?
If you amend it, do five. Well.
Well, I mean, 30 minutes is, is better than nothing, and it seems like a compromise if, if everybody, I mean, at this point, I'm, I'm not sure what we just voted on.
You've got just as much say as anybody.
That's exactly right.
So you, you tell us what you, if you, if you're happy with this, the motion has passed, and it's, it's, it's there.
Is 30 minutes helpful to you, or is this regular, the six o'clock better?
Six o'clock obviously is better, but if you wanted to go, every little bit's gonna help.
How's that gonna impact dinner? I mean, we're gonna meet while we eat.
No, we always, we always came in early and ate.
Can we, can we do, how about this? Can you amend it to, say, 5:30 start, and then we'll have the 30 minutes for closed session? That puts us at a six o'clock start, because that's typically what we do. So 5:30? If you amend it to that?
If I may.
Go ahead.
The one thing that I think you've got to consider there, Mr. Suddles, is the, is the audience. Who normally starts to show up 5:45, 5:30, somewhere in that neighborhood. Some, some want to get a good chair, so they come early, but that is the one thing. So what I don't want to have to do, what I don't recommend doing, is having them locked out.
Okay.
We don't want to have them wait up.
We can potentially wait them upstairs or wait them somewhere else. But I do want y'all to consider that.
Dude, I'm okay with the five. Go ahead, I'll make, I'm, like I said, I'm one of the few on here. This is not the last board where everybody worked, you know, and it was a problem. So I'm okay with that, if you want to do it at five.
Okay, let's make, I make a motion we amend to, to meet at five.
Okay.
To what?
To five. Let, let me, okay, the, we've got amended motion to start our meetings at 5:00, at 5:00 PM rather than six. Okay, so Ms. Helms, do you want to stay as making the motion? Okay. Mr. Suddles, you want to stay?
I'll, I'll second it.
Second.
Five.
Okay, now let me say this. Okay, now, let me say this. There was a, it was brought up by Mr. Baker and, and it's very, that's why we've got the gin to set up the way it's set up. If we come in, we get out of here, you know, early, that, that's great, I mean, if we get out of a closed session, but we can come back. So, you know, I, I think, I think it's a great compromise myself, but, okay. With, with no further discussion, is there any discussion, let me say that before we carry on. All those in favor of starting our, our closed session, uh, meeting at five PM, signify by raising your right hand. Which is you next?
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. Frank?
Yes.
If I, if I will, folks, I do think that gives us time to eat at five, have our closed session, and allow parents plenty of time to come in, I think that's a nice compromise, thank you.
Okay. Board reports under new business, I've got North Carolina School Board's annual conference, the only thing I really would like to say about that is, I feel very appreciative of Mr. Baker being selective. Being selected as our representative for the North Carolina School Board's Board of Directors, that's quite an honor. And also the fact that our county commissioners were voted and nominated, and, I mean, not nominated, but selected as the County Commissioners of the Year for all of North Carolina, that's quite a, quite a feat. And that's all I've got to say, Mr. Suddles?
We already pat, already went over the school improvement plans, on another thing, the McDowell High School Athletic Hall of Fame met and voted. And we are inducting Marty Hensley for basketball, Mike Wade for football, and Tara Pittman for basketball, as an update, so that are.
Is that Marty Hensley from Glenwood?
Marty, I think, was from Glenwood, he went to Chapel Hill, played at Chapel Hill, so.
Eighty-five.
Okay.
Yeah, so Marty, Mike Wade, and Tara Pittman.
Okay. Mr. Barksdale, building grounds?
I believe everything's been said that needs to be said, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Schuford, finance?
I, I have no report other than what Ms. Rampy's already, so.
Okay, let, let me give you some orders if you don't mind. Whenever you go for your January meeting, if it's January, your next meeting, if you would, Mr. Baker has, wants to bring up a subject in there. So if you get with him, make sure it's on the agenda to bring that up and y'all discuss that as a, as a.
It'll be done as requested.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, sir. All right, what about head start, you want anything on that?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Hams' policy, and, and we're gonna look at a couple of policies that may need some amendment, okay? So, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Okay, well, remember, we've got to look at those, okay? All right. Uh, Mr. McGuinness? Inadvertently, you were left off, but we know what a great opportunity you had to go to Washington DC, so I, I know you got, got something you want to talk about in JROTC, so floor is yours.
Should I go up to the podium?
Yeah, that's fine.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I just had a sense that Michael doesn't. So, anyway, so what happened, as everybody knows, Captain Hardy Rose, he passed away, he was a former instructor here back in the late eighties, early nineties, I think all the way up to two thousand. But he was interned at Arlington National Cemetery, so an honor guard from the McDowell ROTC, he got to go up there to actually present colors. And they invited me to go with them because I was a cadet, Mr. Carson was a cadet, any other former cadets in here? Right here, we have a former cadet, did you know, Captain?
I didn't know, I didn't know.
Okay, yeah, awesome guy, I mean, just absolutely amazing. So what you're looking at here, we stayed in these, this is actually, I think, a BFW, it was a scout camp, but it was set up like a barracks, and we'll just go kind of through these kind of quick. That's the band. Basically, document was there, this, the approach to the entrance to Arlington. So as we go further, that house up on the hill you see in the distance is actually the residence of General Robert E. Lee. This land was seized from his family and it was turned into a national cemetery, but that's the old house that still stands, and eventually they were paid for the land, by, you know, dollars to doughnuts. But if you'll notice in the deep background, those cars, that entrance is enormous, but anyway, moving on. Here's our guys, that's Master Chief on the side there, and then the four cadets, Ammons and Hams, trying to remember those other guys. But anyway, that was the, that was the contingent that got to go. And this is just more of the footage, it's Estella's just making her way in right here.
Mr. McGuinness, excuse me, could you not get in your uniform?
Do I, no, I stayed, I stayed there, I probably couldn't fit in mine back in the day. So this, Master Chief decided to take them up to see the Tomb of the Unknown, so this was our escort, the ride we found to get up there, we had to walk back to us, so. We're boarding, so if you guys get a chance, there you go. Here's just us, so we get a first-class trip all the way up, took about fifteen minutes to drive through a graveyard, to get from one point to the next, if you want to imagine that. So this is one little section of the graveyard, and there's about three thousand gravestones right there in this one section, you can't see the whole thing. Arlington National Cemetery is home to four hundred and thirty thousand soldiers, sailors, airmen, and marines. And then it just goes on and on, this is from the bus window, you can see the Washington Monument in the background. I like this little signal thing. So we'll keep going, and it just goes on and on, I'm waiting and purposely was taking those pictures once every minute, so you get an idea. This rotunda that you're seeing here is the back part of the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And this is the approach to it. And then that's a little bit of the history of it. And then here's the actual Tomb of the Unknowns, so what you're seeing here, that big, large obelisk is the first unknown soldier that was interred. Right in front of him is three or four different graves, they've got one from World War II, Korea, Vietnam. They do have one from Desert Storm, and they're probably gonna do the last one from the Global War on Terror, and that's probably gonna be the end of that tradition as far as adding soldiers or sailors to this monument. The gentleman out there in the uniform, that is the old guard of United States Army, they're out there twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, they never stop. And so here we are, kind of posing, that's the Master Chief on the far side, and then, of course, the tomb behind him. And then I took the opportunity to jump in there with him, that's proof I was there. Anyway. This ain't a theater, this is where they hold all kinds of different events, but this is actually right behind the tomb. And then, of course, that's the parting shot as we're basically running through the cemetery to get back down on time where we're gonna be. The cadets was kind of getting a little nervous as far as us getting back on time, and I told them not to worry, Master Chief would decide what time it is. And that's just a beautiful view from right there at that portico, and you can see the Washington Monument all the way in the background, this is the suburb of DC. Here we are, they're getting last minute advice before the ceremony starts. A little bit more advice, and of course, if you look closely, Master Chief is reattaching the head of the guy carrying the flag. No, so anyway, he's adjusting covers, and these guys look sharp, I gotta tell you, for a bunch of teenagers to do what they're about to do, this blows my mind. Everybody in this room should be highly proud of these four cadets, and I'll show you why here in just a second. So what happens here is, this is gonna be the funeral power, where they're gonna set the body, but this is not gonna be the actual interment, this is just a parade ground they use for the ceremony. And of course, this is flanking the rows and rows of the honored dead that goes on for miles and miles. And of course, this is where we set up on this sidewalk. And they're all adjusting their gear and getting ready, what's gonna happen is, when the family and the actual funeral party arrives, they're gonna go right in front of them. And so here they are, getting ready, now, if you'll notice that American flag, and ignore my top middle finger there, I'm just kind of dropping down the lens, but. The American flag looks like it is blowing, and it continues to do that for about forty-five minutes. And that kid, Cadet Ammons, held that flag, and that was like sixty mile an hour winds, it was insane, but they did not break rank a single time the entire time. It's pretty amazing, you can see that flag in the background, that's like about three hundred yards from where we was at, that is a Tom Johnson-sized flag. And it's blowing almost fully the entire time we were there. This is the actual Navy rifle honor guard, they're the ones that actually gonna do the twenty-one gun salute off to the side, and somewhere in that wall behind them, I believe, is actually where the captain was actually interred. And of course, between these two cadets, that is Captain's daughter escorted by Navy honor guard all the way across the field there. Close-up shot of that. And then you can see the flag starts blowing, it doesn't stop, and they're fighting it the entire time. In the background, you can see the Navy honor guard to the rear and the Navy band that actually marched up with the caissons. And of course, that's basically what we've seen the entire time, so if you can imagine a flag that size, and that guy was just sitting there holding it the entire time and would not let that thing go. And then this is the actual ceremony, where they're even having to hold that flag to keep it from blowing away, you can see the sailor on the far left at the flag, he is actually leaning back to hold it in place to keep it from flying out of his hand. And it's amazing, when they get the casket up there on that thing, they don't just take it off like we see here and just roll it on. When they got him off, they put him over, they shung him straight overhead and held him there, and then lowered him all the way down, I've never seen that number before. More of the ceremony. And of course, this is the honor guard walking off, and I thought it was amazing, every one of them went by, saluted our guys, they saluted the colors, so it was just awesome. It was a good experience for these young men, for sure, and I managed to get my shadow in that photo, so. Now here is afterwards, they had a reception, I mean, I've never, that these people, his family treated us with such graciousness and kindness, there's not enough can be said. But this is some of the captain's achievements, and if you'll notice, that small picture up in the right-hand corner, the man could play a mean clarinet. He actually grew up in New Orleans, around that area, and he was in a jazz band most of his life. Here's just some more pictures. One of my favorite ones, this, it says service medals and campaign ribbons and whatnot. If you'll notice, the very center picture to his right shoulder, that is him actually returning from a combat mission in Vietnam, the captain was a stud, what can I say? And then over here, that prop, that's when he first was learning to fly, and then his band actually achieved some kind of honor, I didn't quite get the whole information on that, but that's that bottom lower. But they actually went around the BFW, and VA Centers in Prescott, Arizona, where he was living, they called themselves the Geritol Jazz, that's what they did, they went around and entertained vets. But the whole time we were playing up there, or while we were eating, they had him playing the clarinet on a, like a record he'd released, I gotta get my hands on that, it's awesome. This is Master Chief crossing, he's talking to the family and giving his remarks. And then this was something they handed me, I've got that on my desk in my office, in the sheriff's office, Savers' Creed Challenge coin, everybody there got a different one, they got like a round one for the Navy, so it was kind of a great honor. And of course, the dear little lady is sitting right there in the middle of this group is Captain Rose's wife, she's ninety-three years old, and she got up and gave one heck of a speech, and of course, that's our guys. And she just liked enjoying the moment, she loved being around us. And of course.
There you are.
And then that's when she was giving the speech, and if you notice, she was actually wearing the captain's wings on her top of her lapel there, which I thought was awesome. And I think that's, yeah, that's the inside of the barracks where we stayed, and these guys got to looking sharp, and I tell you what, they, they really did a great job, so that was, that was a trip. None of those, they won't forget it, three of those guys have already committed to naval acad, or well, to different academies. One of them is trying to get a bill right now, and he's gonna find out in a couple of days, and one of them, on our way back from that luncheon, got accepted to one, so it was kind of amazing, but. That blank check, they're willing to go put their name on it, so, good guys. And of course, this is when Captain finally pulled up, the band was ahead of him, they brought him up on full caisson, it was amazing, that was, that was just an awesome experience, great honor to have been a part of that. And of course, that's when we actually started the day, I got them a little out of order, but I think that might be it, yeah, that was probably the last shot. Oh, and there she is talking, this is amazing, so, anyway, we, we absolutely had a great time, and I think that's all of it, so thank you all.
Thanks for going.
Oh, yeah.
Great job, Derek.
Item number seventeen on the gin is approval, the consent agenda, and I want to remind the board that if there's a certain item on that agenda, the consent agenda, that you won't pull, we can pull it. By majority board vote, but if not, I'll accept a motion to accept the agenda as printed, the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll second it. We have a motion by Mr. Schuford and a second by Mr. Baker. Is there any discussion concerning the consent agenda? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, which is a unanimous vote. Okay, we don't need to return to closed session, we'll, I'll entertain a motion on the closed session personnel matters, both certified and non-certified.
I'll make a motion, we accept.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Suddles and a second by Mr. Barksdale. Is there any further discussion on personnel accepting both certified and non-certified personnel records, uh, mo, uh, bo, uh, personnel, uh, business? Okay, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay. That's a nine, unanimous vote. All right, uh. Oh, oh, wait, wait, just, I'm gonna give announcements then, if you don't mind. Okay, announcements, Board Education Regular Session Meeting will be Monday, January the twelfth at six, five PM.
Closed session at five PM, the meeting will start at six.
Right. And also, anybody that can, next Monday, the eighth, here on the board, come to the county commissioners' room, boardroom. We're gonna officially present them with the County Commissioners of the Year Award, Dr. Gritt, they're doing that.
Uh, what time does that start?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock next Monday.
Next Monday, yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
If I was to speak one more time, everybody's gonna get up and leave, I'll be real quick, being, being a chairman can be stressful. It, it really does change when you come to these meetings and you have to, have to chair, Mr. Frank does just an incredible job doing that. And I thought, I know I speak on behalf of the board, thanking, thanking you for doing that, and with, with much appreciation, you really do a nice job. Second thing, I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas, and I think I can do that on behalf of the board. To staff and everybody, I hope everyone enjoys, enjoys their Christmas.
Stand up here, let me see.
Yes. They're the heroes. Yeah.
Wait, just one more, no, thank you, one more thing we gotta adjourn, but one question for, for Mrs. Allison, did you stay so you could drive him home?
You're gonna have a hard time getting my head in the truck.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. Is there any further discussion on adjourn? With no further discussion, I'll entertain a vote, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, Ms. Allison?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's, no, thank you, that's, that's. Okay, that's, 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 no, thank you. That's, that's.